So how are you? Is that Danny, your brother over there?
Yeah.
You guys been good this year? With Santa? Hi, can I do that? Can you be a good girl? Help pick up all your toys? Okay. And you make sure you wear your seatbelt too, huh? Wear your seatbelt for Santa, make sure you do that? Okay. Let's have, what, can we scoot it here and we'll take a picture? There you go, ready? There. Look right there, that lady will take a nice picture of you and Santa.
Right here.
What do you have? See your picture? Did you make that for Santa?
Yeah.
Is that a big dinosaur?
One of my favorites.
One of your favorites? What kind is that?
Um, dinosaur trap.
It is! Wow! What kind is this?
Um, um, a talking thing.
It is, you're right. What can Santa do for you? Have you been a pretty good boy this year? What can Santa bring? What would you like? Have you thought about it a little bit?
Batman.
Batman?
Yeah. And Spider-Man.
And Spider-Man. And what else can you?
And Spider-Man.
Is it okay if I bring some surprises too?
Yeah.
Can I do that? Can you maybe leave Santa Claus a treat? Can you do that? Okay. Turn my Santa this way? Scoot it over here, so we're both right in the picture. Okay, look right up there. Got a big smile? There. What can I do for you? Have you thought about? Um, let me see. I'm gonna bring you some surprises, because I'm really proud of you, Santa. Keep up the good work, thank you. Someone's gonna see me. How are ya? Look at all the heavy equipment on your shirt. You like those kinda things? Come on up here and see old Santa, how are ya? You been a good boy? Can we turn around so Mom can get a picture? You can scoop it over here. You can hang out on the beach with Santa Claus, go back.
Scoot it closer to Santa.
Scoop right in that, oh boy! Got a big smile, you think?
Good, now stay here.
And then that lady's gonna take one right there, so then you can tell Santa what you wanna do. Look at that lady now.
Can you say thank you?
Well, I'm glad you came to see me. I love that Santa brings a lot of surprises. Can I do that? Okay. You keep being a good boy, Santa's friends last year, and you lost some teeth, didn't ya? Did the tooth fairy come? Tooth fairy's one of Santa's friends, did you know that? An Easter bunny? Yeah. What can Santa bring for you guys this year? Okay, can we all look right here and Donald take a picture? You do? Can Santa bring some other surprises too? Because you've been pretty good this year, haven't ya?
Yeah.
And you pick up your toys and everything? And help out around the house? And help with your sister? And wear our seatbelt too, right? Make sure we do that. Are you in school already this year?
Fresh grade.
You are? Do you go to Netherwood Knoll? Do you go in Oregon? Prairie View? Oh, that's okay. That's good, I'm sure glad you came down. I'm gonna make sure that there's some good surprises for you this year, all right? You keep helping out at home, I'm very proud of you this year, girl. Do a good job in school, too. Thanks, honey.
Welcome to Santa Day 2005 in Oregon. My name is Gwen Doughty from Gwen's Frame Shop. And one of the things that we're doing today is actually we're doing handprints where kids come in, choose their favorite colors, and then they put their handprints on it for their parents for a keepsake with a home at the bottom. There's so many things to do here, Santa Day, and we're hoping it's gonna be a great success. Santa's here and the lines are big already, so come on down, have a great time. Thanks. Ninety-fourth Christmas. Was the night before Christmas when all through the house, not a creature was stirring, not even a mouse. The stockings were hung by the chimney with care, in hopes that Saint Nicholas soon would be there. Are you coming to my house on Christmas Eve, Nicholas? The children were nestled all snug in their beds while visions of sugarplums danced in their heads, and Mama in her kerchief and I in my cap had just settled down for a long winter's nap. When out on the lawn there arose such a clatter, I sprang from my bed to see what was the matter. Away to the window I... Hi! These are gift baskets from Favors. We're at 113 North Main Street in Oregon, Wisconsin. We do corporate gift baskets, themed gift basket special occasions. Today I have a Christmas selection, wonderful for teacher gifts, those hard-to-buy-for people. Prices can range within any budget. We do, um, anything from a, a, um, individual cookie present package to teacher-type gifts in the fifteen to twenty dollar range. Certainly any budget can be met. Custom, custom-designed gift baskets, yes.
Wendy, do you deliver, or how would people get, if they called in an order and they wanted something delivered in Oregon?
Certainly, I will deliver anywhere in Oregon, or Dame County. I ship throughout the United States. Our phone number is 835-2100. Happy to help in any way, we'll custom-design for your corporate gifting needs, personal or individual.
Wendy, thanks for being with us on this day.
Thank you so much.
Hey, Mary Ann.
Hi.
Good morning, how are you doing?
I'm doing fine.
Oh, I see these great books over here, I had to come talk to you. What, what kinda business is this?
This is Usborne Books. And Usborne Books are sold all over the world. They've been in the United States since 1989. And we sell these books in a variety of markets. We sell them to schools and libraries, as well as to families and individuals. I do parties in people's homes. And I also do book fairs for corporations and schools and other organizations, and fundraisers, including a wonderful reading incentive program. And I do these for organizations to earn either cash, free books, or a combination of cash and free books.
Now, where can people contact you if they would like to set up an appointment or buy some books?
Well, there's a, there's a few ways to contact me. I have a website, which is www.usbornebooksource.com. And I also can be reached by phone at area code 608-206-4448.
Well, thanks for being here on Santa Day, this is great to see all these books.
Well, thank you.
Hi, bro. How you doing today?
Good.
Good. What are you making there? Looks really nice.
I'm making a candy cane.
You are? Now, is this something you can eat? No. Yeah, I wouldn't eat that, that'd kinda hurt, actually. But, uh, now what are you gonna do when you're done with the candy cane?
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put on the Christmas...
Hey, everybody!
Hi, guys! Merry Christmas! Happy Hanukkah! Happy New Year! This is Brenda McClellan with the Oregon Youth Center. We're out at Santa Days, having a great time. The kids are doing gift wrapping, and I've got kids here doing Christmas cookies today. And we just like helping out with the community, right, girls?
Yeah.
Now, Brenda, could you introduce these lovely ladies?
Absolutely.
Now, who's this one on your left?
This is Sarah Roach.
Sarah Roach?
She not only is a part of the Youth Center, but she's a leader at Oregon Middle School. She's one of the looms.
She's a loom?
She's a loom.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, Sarah, just a question, how long have you been wrapping gifts? Over, I hear, twenty-five years, is that true, or is that? Is my information wrong?
Um, about fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes? But you guys are real good, because I've seen you wrap...
They're professionals.
Yeah. Now, now who's this lady right here?
This is Paige.
Paige?
Yes.
And she, is she a loom?
She is a loom, and she's part of Oregon Youth Center.
Okay.
And how these girls got involved, we went to a dance at the middle school, the Oregon Youth Center sponsored a dance, and I met the girls, and I started talking to them, and I told them to come over to the Youth Center. And ever since then, they've been there practically every day, right?
Yeah.
Now, you've been wrapping gifts here as well this morning? Have you had anything real difficult to wrap?
No.
Okay. It's been fun talking to you. Now, who's this lady on the end? There's this similarity between this woman and this woman. I don't know what it is, but it's there.
That would be Brittany Angle, who happens to be my oldest daughter.
Oh, my gosh.
A graduate of Oregon High School.
You're a graduate of Oregon High School, and you're helping out the new looms.
That's right.
Look at them. Busy. You know, it's great to have you guys here, and to help all the little kids coming, and the parents wrapping the gifts. We really appreciate it. So, right now, we'll just say goodbye.
Can I say something else?
Absolutely.
Oregon Youth Center rocks!
Indeed.
Hope to see you guys there. Thanks, Merry Christmas!
Making cookies. I ate yours already.
Garrett, are you, have you had any cookies that have been really hard to, to make with the kids today?
Yes.
Had challenges?
This one little girl, she's like, cookie, it was a Christmas tree, and she put tons of frosting on it, and it was all over the table.
And who ate that extra frosting? Anyone? Okay. Now, tell me about what these young children are doing with these cookies. They've made them, they've baked them, and now they're, they're getting ready to eat them.
That's the best part!
Yeah. Now, are they... Garrett, are you serving milk today with these cookies?
I don't eat milk.
What's...
I kinda overlooked that detail, I guess.
Well, we can get that later. All right, well, kids, thanks for eating the cookies and making them today. It's been fun. We'll see you next year? So, it looks like Zingadine's here today.
Yep.
Matt, how you doing?
Good.
What's going on? You're here at Santa Day, and...
Yep, we're having a little bit of a giveaway. We're gonna give away either a bucky book, or fifty dollars...
Wow.
...towards dent removal.
Nice. How is the Zingadine doing?
Good. Usually this time of year, in the winter, it slows down pretty heavy, you know? People wash their cars, they get salty, and people leave it until the summer, but really, this is the best time for us, because we can really spend some time and do some nice work.
Now, just for the new viewers that are watching this today, this is an Oregon business. Tell them what Zingadine does.
Oh, okay. Well, we do paintless dent removal, which is taking small door dings out of cars without having to paint. Basically, what we do is come up behind the dent and push it out from the inside.
And your car looks brand-new, as I've seen.
Yes. We, um, as long as the dent isn't too big or too sharp, we can actually take it out to perfection.
Now, Matt, just for the viewers again, would you give the, a number where they can contact you? And get their dent fixed in the car?
Our main phone number is 835-9289.
And, and one more thing I wanna say, it'd be a great gift to give to a loved one, a friend, a neighbor...
Sure, yeah, we have gift certificates and that kinda stuff, and we'd be happy to do something.
Matt, once again, it's been real fun talking with you.
Sure.
You have a good one.
Happy holidays.
Hey, Marlene, how you doing?
Good.
Well, now, what are you doing here today?
Oh, I'm gonna make a gift tag or a journaling box.
A journal, this for journaling? Like putting pictures and albums?
Yes.
Stuff like that? Okay. Now, this is memories, is it?
Creative memories.
Creative memories? Gotta remember that creative part, right? Okay, let me see what you're doing.
Um, first you have to choose a piece of lime paper, a triangle, and some stickers.
I gotcha.
Second, um, the second step, you have to use a personal trimmer.
And this is your personal trimmer, here?
Yeah.
Gotta wash the fingers, right?
Yeah.
And you slide...
You cut it in half.
Okay, the guillotine of...
And then, you have to use a tape runner.
This is a tape runner?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, um, and then do this sideways, and you take... Try and pick it up.
That's a handy little tool there.
And you just slide it across.
Nice.
And then you stick it to the paper.
And look at that. Right before our eyes, you're starting to create something magical. And it's gonna look nice.
And then, you add stickers, and, oops.
Little malfunction there, but that's fine, you gotta put it down and...
And then...
Stick it on there, so you take these stickers...
Yeah. And then you just stick 'em on the triangle.
Okay.
And you can make it for any occasion.
Well, this is really nice, Marlene. You could do a whole bunch of things, I see here. Now, is there anyone you'd like to introduce while we're, while we're here at the Santa Day, the special Santa Day?
My mom.
Well, why don't you walk over there and show us who those people are? Maybe behind the table. Oh, yeah, where are you going now? There you go. Now, who's this, who's this, who's this nice lady right here?
This is my mom.
Hi. Hi, Mom.
Hi. She's the big creative memories person in our house.
And how would we contact her if we wanted to be involved in memories? Creative memories? Maybe Mom can tell us, or...
Our phone number is 835-8129.
You can go to creativememories.com and see all the cool products and stuff.
All the cool stuff that you have on display here today, and more, I'm sure. Now, uh, now who's this young man sitting next to you here?
This is my dad.
He looks very familiar. It's nice to have a family that has two home-based businesses.
His name is Matt, and he's a Zingadine.
He's a Zingadine.
Yeah.
Two home-based businesses, right here in Oregon. Thanks for being with us, and thanks for the tour today. Goodbye, everybody.
Bye-bye.
How's that? Mom's gonna get a picture too.
Chloe with her mom. Ready?
It's a little work, isn't it?
Ann, how you doing?
Doing well.
Good. What are you doing here today? You look busy with all this photo equipment here.
Exactly, I'm actually helping with the Oregon Youth Center. I'm printing out pictures and stuff for, you know, the kids that wanna take their picture with Santa and ask them what they want for Christmas.
That's nice. You got a lot, you got a lot of kids here, hundreds of them in line here.
Oh, yeah. It's kind of intimidating, but...
It is, you gotta watch these kids, huh?
Exactly.
All right, well, good luck with this. Keep it going.
Thank you very much.
And watch the ink.
Oh, yeah.
You're gonna run out of red.
Exactly. Santa's red suit.
Nice! What can I do for you?
Well, you know, like last year, I just asked for one thing and the rest were surprises.
That's right. I remember that.
But this year, I wanna glow in the dark, um, little bear, and the rest surprises like last...
Just like last year? Okay, why don't I do that? Because you've been really good again this year, haven't ya? You help school, right? Where's your teachers? Oh, she's really nice, isn't she? I was thinking about just doing that, just one special thing and then lots of surprises, because you help out at home, and you keep wearing your seatbelt, don't you? And school's going really well.
My dad sometimes, when we take, like, just going to my cousins or to school...
He forgets to put his on?
No, um, usually, well, sometimes, not usually, but he like, um, he said, "Oh, it's just like a minute..."
Oh!
"...without my seatbelt."
Wow! You tell your dad he has to buckle up a bit.
I do!
You tell him Santa Claus said so. Has your teacher been good to you?
Scamps the dog, and a birdie.
How about you, honey?
I have the doll talking kitten, and I have the dust ball, and I have the...
Can I bring some surprises?
Hi, I'm Anna, and I'm Santa's helper today, and I'm the elf here.
Hey, Deb, how you doing?
I'm doing really good!
Hey, I noticed this new table here. What do you do here?
Well, have you heard about the Big Yellow Box yet?
No, I haven't. Could you tell me about it and show me, uh, what's, what's going on?
Sure. Let me tell you a little bit about it. This is by Crayola, it's been out for about nineteen months now, just getting into Wisconsin. It's a new home party show that they're doing. It allows that, allows you to spend time, quality time, with your friends or your children, or whoever you wanna get together with. Basically, what they've done is they've taken everything that you need to do the craft and stuck it inside the box. And so they call it the Big Yellow Box. So inside of here, in order to do this craft, will be the paintbrushes, the paint, the paint trays, the product itself, and a nice guy that tells you exactly how to do it. Because if you're like me, you're not real crafty, I need somebody to tell me exactly how to do it. One, two, three, four, five. Or if you wanna do it outside the box, you can go ahead and do it. What they did is they tried to take all the colors that'll actually look good together and put it inside the product, so you can do it any way that you wanna do it. But my eight-year-old granddaughter's done a lot of the products that we have on the table here. She got started with it...
Deb, let's walk around and look at some of the products. And it'll be important to give your number where people can contact you, but let's, uh... Now, all these things were created like, like, like these here, what?
These little fuzz buckets here are one of the newest things that came out for the holiday product. When you start the product, it starts out completely blank. So you get the three blank tins, the fuzz, the fuzzies on the top, the glue, the sparkles, everything's in there.
And look at this, this really is a sweet-looking, uh, can.
Yeah. We did this at one of our other craft shows, the kids, we actually brought it with us, and then the kids worked on it while we were here, so unfortunately, his nose wasn't quite dry when we left with them, but... But it does tell, walk you through the steps on how to do it, step one, step two, so forth. Thing I really like about these is you can't do the craft in a half an hour. It takes, it's gonna take a little while to do it, and while you're doing it, you get the, they make memories with the kids, or with your friends, if that's what you're going with, but it's been so much fun just listening to the kids, how excited they get with it.
Now, where can people contact you, Deb?
Uh, actually, I'm just the newest consultant here in southern Wisconsin. I'm all from Monthorpe, Wisconsin, but you can contact me at 608-437-3741, or go on our website, which is thebigyellowbox.net/grammadep. And you can see all our products on there also.
Now, Deb, if people wanted to be a consultant, would they also contact you?
Absolutely. Um, we're looking for help down here, I'm pretty much the only consultant in the Madison area. There are some in Milwaukee. We are, we do have a new consultant that's gonna be starting up with this.
And she's here today?
Yes, she is.
Now, where is she, uh, she's talking with someone?
Yep, she's working with a customer over here, her name is Dawn Backman, and she is from Oregon here. I don't have her phone number, unfortunately, yet.
Well, that's all right, we can get that.
She's gonna be doing a, um, a coming-out party in January, where she'll be, actually, her first show, I'll be working with her on that day, but she'll be taking orders and so forth from there.
Well, thanks, why don't we, uh, take a break here? And then stop and talk to Dawn for a second?
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hey, I'd like to introduce the newest consultant that I have in our area. This is Dawn Backman. Dawn, you wanna tell them a little bit about yourself?
Well, this is all new for me, I'm from Oregon here now. I just moved down here, so I'm a new face. And I will be doing the Big Yellow Box, and if you have any questions or want any information, my phone number is 835-3718.
Thanks, ladies, this really looks like a great idea.
It's a lot of fun.
All right, we'll see you soon. Hey, hi, Jaclyn!
Hi, how are you?
Good, how you doing? It's good to see you here today. Now, I noticed Tupperware's here, I haven't seen that around in years. How, uh, how can people contact you first? I wanna get that out.
First, well, they can give me a call at 279-3981, and area code 608. And I'm looking for new consultants to, they wanna earn some extra money, or if you need any products, you can call me. Again, the number is 608-279-3981. I go into homes and new parties, and I also, um, do fundraisers for different schools and events. So it's a great way to make money, um, and always looking for smiling.
For people.
Yeah.
Now, Jaclyn, I, I, I have some Tupperware, it's kinda old, but I noticed a lot of beautiful new colors. Is there anything, uh, new that, like this item here? I, you know, I've never seen this thing, what is this here?
This is a measuring cup.
Well, that's neat. And it's Tupperware, so the quality's there.
Yep.
It helps. Any other interesting and new products that you can tell us about? Yeah, this looks neat here.
We always have our rock and serve items. And these, you take them to work, put anything in it for your microwave, and it won't crack. All you gotta do is vent it.
And what does that do? That just vents it?
Yep, and so when you're, um, heating your stuff up at work, you don't have to eat everybody else's food. It doesn't splatter all over.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You know, when you get at work and it's all yucky? These go in the freezer, they go, um, microwave, refrigerator, dishwasher safe. They're amazing product, they won't stain with your spaghetti, so they're a big seller.
Now, there's one other product here in the, in the wrapper here with the metal here. What, what is this? Is that metal, or...
Nope, it is a bowl, just like this one, it's our one-touch bowl. You push in the middle, and you pull the lid off, and it just has a different print on it. It's got...
Okay.
Dog print.
All right.
So...
Well, could you give your number again?
Yes.
And where people can contact you?
My number again is 608-279-3981, and my name is Jaclyn Bissell.
Jaclyn, it's been fun seeing Tupperware out here again, we need it.
Thank you.
Especially for the holidays and his gifts.
Yes, they make great gifts, and there's lots of sale items right now, too, so give me a call!
Thanks.
Thanks.
Hey, good morning, Carla.
Good morning, how are you today?
Good. Can you tell us about your business here?
Sure, sure, I work with Melaluka, we're the wellness company. And we actually have five different product lines, uh, that are safer for your home, safer for the environment. We take care of all of the cleaning products, laundry care, we have a personal care product line, similar to Bath &amp; Body Works, however, they're better for your, for your skin and for your family. We have vitamins for men, women, and children, nutritional supplements. We have a whole weight loss line, protein line, anything that you can buy at GNC, basically, except our products have fructose compounding, which means that your body absorbs them, so they're better utilized. We also have skincare and cosmetics, uh, that are, uh, given to us through Nicole Miller, who is a famous fashion designer. And Nicole Miller chose Melaluka when she was looking for a reputable company to market her skincare and cosmetics. We also have a whole pharmaceutical line, which means over-the-counter medications. We also have a whole pharmaceutical line, which means over-the-counter medications. Melagel is similar to like an antibiotic ointment. It's the only thing my kids will let me use on their boo-boos. It takes away the pain and also helps it to heal better. So all of those products are available directly from the company. Anybody who's interested in the business opportunity, Melaluka has a very lucrative compensation plan, and you don't have to stock, sell, or deliver anything. So anybody who's interested in maybe referring other customers to the company, they earn a compensation when they do that.
Now, Carla, I'm sorry. I want to get your number out for people.
Sure, sure.
In any other way that people can contact you or you would tell us.
Sure. Well, my name is Carla. I live locally in Evansville. My home phone number is 608-882-5962, and they can call me directly, or they can email me at kcam, K-C-A-M as in Michael, M as in Michael, at charter.net.
Now, Carla, is there anything else you want to add about the company?
Well, I think, you know, in today's world, we're really looking at finding products that are safer for our environment. Phosphates are a problem. One pound of phosphates creates 400 pounds of green algae in our environment. So Melaluka's products don't use any phosphates, no formaldehydes, no ammonias, no chlorine bleaches. So really looking at wellness as a whole.
Carla, I'm feeling better talking to you already.
Well, I'm glad. I'm glad I could enrich your day that way.
You have. Thank you. And one more time, your phone number?
Sure. It's 608-882-5962.
Carla, thanks for being with us.
Thank you. Have a great day now.
Dimitri?
Hi.
How's it going?
Good.
So what are you doing here? You're at the concession stand today?
Yeah, we're selling chips.
What do you got? You got chips here?
Yeah.
Like Fritos?
Yeah, Cheetos, Doritos.
Are those Cheeto? And then you got Lay's potato chips?
Yeah.
And is this your favorite?
Yeah, probably.
I knew it was. What else do you have to eat here today?
There's apple cider, there's juice, there's popcorn, there's hot dogs.
It sounds like a delicious time.
Yeah, it is.
I think I'll order something in a little bit. Thanks for being here since 5:30 this morning, cooking all this stuff. I hope someone comes and helps you soon.
Yeah, they will.
Okay. Goodbye, buddy.
Bye.
Okay. And you know what? If you guys want a balloon, or a sucker, or a pencil, you can take one here. There. Nope. Yep, that would be pretty good. Should I take those? Oh, I get one, too?
You get one?
Yeah, everyone gets one. Did you get one, Carla? Okay.
Here's your handout.
Thank you.
This is the...
Happy holidays.
... vendors that are here today.
Okay.
We've got some information on the activities, some stuff on college funding, and if you're interested in buying or selling a house, Tracy will be happy to help.
All right. All right. Thanks. Have a great time. Okay, thank you.
Hey, you two. What are you guys doing here today?
Well, we're volunteering for Santa Day. My name is Tracy Meyer with Remax Preferred.
I'm Dave Mastis with DLM Financial Solutions.
Well, go ahead, guys. Keep saying what you're doing and...
We're here with the Chamber. We're both Chamber members and actually on the board, directors of the Oregon Area Chamber of Commerce, here to support the Chamber and have some fun.
Thank you, guys, very much for being here and helping out. I appreciate it. Give phone numbers where people can reach, find your businesses.
Okay, they can reach me at 212-9386.
And if you need any kind of financial planning, college funding, retirement planning, call me at 692-8149.
Thanks, you two.
Thank you.
Great New Year, and thanks for watching WOW TV. Ho, ho, ho!
Mike, he stopped working the door like two minutes ago. I was like, are they trying to?
Good evening, everyone.
Oh, he don't, he.
I would like to call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board on Monday, December nineteenth at five P. M. And I would request roll call, please.
Boudreaux?
Here.
Brett Howard?
Here.
Peyton?
Here.
Follis?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Thank you. So we'll go to item three, the police chief report. Item A, discussion possible action, police department fingerprinting issue. Chief?
Yeah, so we've been getting a fair amount of people coming in to want fingerprinting done for employment and various things. We've also had people from outside the community ask to do this. I think it would be in our best interest, like many other agencies around, it would be to charge for that. We have, obviously have to have our officers' time to come in and do that. We also have to pay for supplies and things like that. So I would be recommending a nominal fee of ten dollars for residents and fifteen dollars for non-residents to do that, and that's pretty much in line with other departments around the area.
Okay, thank you. So do we have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion or questions?
So other communities do the same thing, then?
They do, yeah. Like, I've got Middleton, for example, the ones I could find, do ten dollars for residents, fifteen dollars for non. Fitchburg does ten dollars for residents and twenty-four for non-residents. Madison P. D., they do ten dollars strictly across the board.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second for fingerprinting at ten dollars residents, fifteen dollars non-residents.
So employers are asking for fingerprints?
Oh, yeah. Employers ask for fingerprint, depending on who they are, especially like teachers and things like that.
Wow, okay.
They didn't fingerprint me. Probably a good thing.
We're in trouble.
Oh, Steve, you'd be careful.
Okay, we're gonna move on. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion possible action regarding custodial interrogation policy. Chief?
This is a policy, again, moving on for accreditation. It's also one of the core policies that you need, just to make sure that you're following the law. Any questions on the policy at all?
It was nice to have a short one come our way.
Yeah, and not ten of them, right?
Yeah.
Is the biggest change the use of the body camera, then? Is that what?
We just didn't really have any, any policy at all in the department that dealt with custodial interrogations, which you need, so.
So we would need a motion on this?
I'll make that a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions on the custodial interrogation policy? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, discussion possible action, authorization to purchase two thousand seventeen police squad. Chief?
So we put this out for bid with Middleton Ford. We asked Kaiser Ford, but they still haven't returned any of our calls. And also Ewald and a Conmelawak, who has the state bid every year. And as you can see, the bid from Middleton Ford is about six hundred and thirty-four dollars higher than Ewald. So I'll leave it up to you guys on which age you want to go through, if you want to stay local or go with the, with the one that's a little cheaper, so.
Can you remind me why we're, why we're purchasing the vehicle? What's the business reason?
Well, we, we go through a rotation every year to keep our squads up to date. You know, they get, they get excess miles, so usually we do a one-year on one, and then the next year we'll do two. I think for the last two years, we've done one through the rotation.
So this is a normal expense?
Yep.
It's a budgeted expense?
Correct.
And at this point, you're just simply asking, do we have a preference on where you get it?
Exactly.
Do you have a preference from a service perspective? Are you feeling more comfortable one place or the other?
Middleton Ford actually is talking to us about their service department and said whether we purchase one there or not, we can always take our squads in there to be service, and they'll bump off, everyone off that's not law enforcement and get ours in right away, so. Either way, no, it doesn't matter to me.
So how, how would you feel about taking your business there, given that they've committed to that level of service for you? I mean, obviously, the business matters to them.
Yeah, I mean, again, you know, I've been a part of other boards who like to spend a little more to keep the business local, and I've been a part of others that don't. They'd rather just, you know, go with the cheapest bid. They're the same vehicles, so we're not, it is not a difference in, in the options or anything like that, so.
Do you get the same thing, though, if you stay here? The same, you could take it in any time?
Anytime, yep, yeah.
And why are you calling, just for my benefit, Ewald a local dealer?
No, I'm calling Middleton Ford local, because Ewald's a Conmelawak.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
Typically, we have gotten these from Kaiser.
Yeah, if you don't have a preference one way or the other, I'd recommend Middleton Ford.
Yeah, and you're just spending a little bit more to do that.
And you're gonna do the servicing there, and it's, to me, I think that the peace of mind and having good servicing and the fact that they're telling you that they're gonna give you preferential treatment when you pull up, I think it's worth paying them a little bit more for the vehicle to, to kind of thank them for that.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Oh, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? So we have the motion, a second to purchase a two thousand seventeen police squad. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Middleton is.
It's really helpful to me, too, as you come to the board. I don't know how we would work this out, but to put as much of that information in terms of, you know, this is a regular recurring purchase, this is a budgeted item in the minutes, so that when I'm preparing myself for the meeting...
I, I'm sorry, I should have put that on the agenda. This was in the seventeen budget.
That's helpful for me.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yep.
Okay, we'll go to item three D., which is from the December five Personnel, Public Safety and Protection Committee meeting. Discussion possible action about purchasing a new speed trailer in two thousand seventeen in the Fund four fourteen, which is capital equipment. Recommend a motion as to purchase a new speed trailer from Custom Signals in the amount of five thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. Originally, that was six thousand three sixty-five, and amend the two thousand seventeen budget four fourteen fund to include the purchase. Funding will come from two thousand seventeen borrowing. So do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second for discussion.
Thank you.
So besides the recent conversation that we've had about the use of the speed trailer, where else do you see it being beneficial for the village to have, and why?
Well, are you just referring to the one location?
Right.
I mean, we get, we get requests almost weekly for, you know, speed issues on certain streets, so we tried to make our other speed trailer limp through. It didn't work out. We couldn't resurrect it. And so I went out and got several bids for speed trailers, and actually, this one was higher, and competition's a good thing, I will say, so they kind of helped lower the price on this, so. I mean, we get, the, the good thing about, the bad thing about our trailer now, if we had it, is it doesn't go in what's called dark mode, so I probably shouldn't say a whole lot, but basically, how that works is, you know, it's, it's not on, but it is on, so it's recording traffic data, and people don't really realize that, so they're not going to alter their driving behavior. So you want to have that option. This trailer has that option, so.
And how does that help you with enforcement?
Well, what that does is it tells us, is there a problem? A lot of times in the community, we'll get complaints, and then we'll go out there, and there really won't be much of a problem. It's just kind of a perceived problem. Maybe there's one or two cars. This will tell us, you know, in fact, you know, how many cars are driving down there? What's the speed limit? What's the average speed limit? Is there, you know, is there a big fluctuation in speeds, and is there an actual problem? And this will help us do that.
So instead of having to put a patrolman there?
Very good.
For days and days?
Yep.
You can put a machine there and let the patrolman patrol other areas of the village?
Yeah, and this has good, this has features with wireless data transfer, things like that, so it'll make it easier for us to get that information.
Can this photograph violating vehicles?
No. I'm not sure you can do that by state law, can you? Right? You know, people have pushed for that, but I'm not sure you can do that per state law. Uh, I don't know off the top of my head. That would cost a lot of money to have that feature, though.
Jeff, you're expecting awful lot.
Can it send the ticket directly from the?
Yeah, that'd be fantastic.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, so we have the motion, a second to approve purchasing new speed trailer in the amount of five thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Chief, appreciate it. Item four is public appearances. First, a discussion with Brad Clark from the Oregon Snowmobile Club regarding the club's routing request and possible board action. So Brad, if you want to come up to the microphone and get yourself on TV.
Brad, you can use it over there, too, if you want to move that easel up. All right, we are proposing to get a snowmobile trail into...
You have to grab a...
Yeah, excuse me, Brad. We're gonna give you that wireless.
Get that wireless one.
Yeah. Doesn't pick up on TV otherwise, so.
A proposed snowmobile trail from, well, into headquarters and to the QuickTrip. So we are currently coming in here, and we are parking here and walking up to headquarters. And it's a long ways. And we'd really like to get to the gas station. So there's a few proposed. I have permission from everybody on this block and everybody here except for Max Creek. So that's pretty many that's coming across the back of his pond there.
So you can, if you wanted to, you currently could come, instead of going through Max Creek, you could go back across the road, come up, and then come back across the road?
Yes, this is a retention pond that is there, that the village owns, so we would need permission from the village to do that.
And then the other issue is, is on County Highway MM, trying to get up and into the QuickTrip?
Yep.
And I think, Mike, didn't I read that there was some, some variance, issues that have to be monitored or managed on the highway side of things?
Well, if you read, if you read the chief's email in response to Jeff's memo, Brian's racism concerned about trying to get a snowmobile on either of those roads because of the, it'd probably have to go out into the right-of-way or, or on the sidewalk, which is not permissible. So, so, and Holly's here. Holly's the expert on snowmobiles. So I should probably have her be answering that question, but there is a bit of a challenge getting to, to QuickTrip, yeah, no doubt about that.
And I can give you a little overlay of the lay of the land here regarding what the village can and can't do. So the chief was right in pointing out Chapter three fifty, that chapter regulates snowmobiles and states that any sort of regulation of snowmobiles by the village has to strictly conform to this chapter. And this chapter does address how snowmobiles may be regulated in the village highways and roadways. And it's sort of confusing, because it says that you can operate a snowmobile on any highway except in these following ways. And highway essentially includes sidewalk, any part that the village owns, so the entire right-of-way. And the two ways that the village could regulate this is by designating routes in accordance with Chapter three fifty. Otherwise, I think the chief was right, I mean, you have the latitude to determine what's safe and what's not safe. You have the ability to regulate right-of-way and where snowmobiles can sort of be a route along the right-of-way. So if you have any other questions?
So let me, let me ask a question that came to my mind when I was thinking about this. Would it be possible for these gentlemen to go back to the park board and talk about the building of a, of a bridge over the Butter Creek for just the purpose of transporting a snowmobile across that, across that spance, so that they don't have to come out to the highway?
You mean to get to the headquarters?
Yeah, so if they could put a bridge over, over Butter Creek right there between headquarters and the QuickTrip, and then they could come up to the parking lot that way?
I got you, I got you.
And since Butter Creek is, it's just a spring-fed creek, it doesn't erode on either side. And I know that that might not be a solution for this year, but maybe that's something that the park board could take a look at and see if it's an option.
It may actually be a DNR, right? Issue?
What, we work with the A W S. C. and Dane County Parks regulates all of our funding, and we apply for grants for bridges and such, and they do approve funding for bridges, but they do tend to look for a longer commitment if they're gonna pay for a bridge. They're gonna want easement on each side of that that's good for a certain number of years typically, so they're not wasting the funding, you know, so that would just, and it is a, by a three-year process to have that, so it is definitely a possibility, but not an immediate thing. So once we'd get, we go through your process to get the approval from Parks, then we could start looking into the, applying for funding for a bridge.
Do you see a legal way for them to get to QuickTrip with the map that they have up now?
Well, again, the village can determine routes along the right-of-way under the law. You just have to pass an ordinance that says what those routes are and the regulations on those routes, but I think the chief had some concerns about safety.
Yeah, well, the concern along Janesville Street, obviously, to QuickTrip, that route there, there's really no place for a snowmobile to go unless you're on the sidewalk or have to go in the road, because there's signs, and it's not very wide along the terrace there, so I do have some concerns about pedestrian safety and vehicular traffic along there.
Yeah, and I, and I think our preferred route would be to come this direction, and I know other villages do designate snowmobile routes. Verona uses, from Military Ridge, Nine Mound, of what used to go to the truck stop in Verona, but that is now defunct, but that was the gas stop. And right now, our closest spot to get gas is all the way to Belville on the trail system, so our ultimate goal is to try to get to a, a gas station in the area.
So Holly, I'm sorry, does that ten feet, then, apply to, to Highway MM, then? They have to be ten feet from the terrace?
Right, so my reading of that part of the statute is if you choose to regulate, so let's say the village determines that they want County Highway MM to be within their routes, that if someone is operating a snowmobile adjacent to a state and county highway, it has to be a ten or, ten or more feet away from the pavement, because the roadway includes the pavement.
And I don't know if there's enough room along that route.
There's for sure not. Once you cross Butter Creek, that's just barely the sidewalk.
Right. So that was your idea, Jeff, is to have them come in the back way?
Have them come in the back way and put a bridge over Butter Creek.
Other communities, we, we go right down the road. They do allow it on the, they do allow it on the road, and I don't know how their ordinances read, but a lot of communities, you do ride on the road once the village has designated certain roadways as a designated route, and they are enforceable if you go off of that route.
But are those, are those county roads or ville, or local roads? I think that's the...
There's both. There, I'm trying to think of... Right now, we ride down County A. Yeah, County Highway A, outside of town, we ride that.
Okay.
I'm trying to think of another local area. I know when we get out up in the northern counties, where, of course, snowmobiling is more popular, most of their, a lot of their trail systems are right on the roadways and county highways, and actually even state highways, they're running it. Prairie to Sac, we ride right through town, the bridge crossing, I think it's Highway thirty-three or something, we cross the river, and it continues straight through town until we can get back to a rural area.
Once they've been designated a snowmobile road, is that what you're saying?
Correct, yes.
And I think the, these regulations that are in subsection B, those are permissive, so I think those are just suggestions from the D O T. regarding operation. And again, the village can designate routes on actual roadways, but then they can regulate how you would operate on such a roadway.
Correct. Typically, when we run through town, speed limit is limited ten miles per hour on our snowmobiles, and we provide all the signage, and, and those signs are enforceable, stops, speed, the yield of right-of-way, everything.
Mike, I was thinking, I mean, we, as a village, we probably have the right to be designating snowmobile routes along Concord Drive, but I don't think we have the right to designate a snowmobile route along County Highway MM. I always forget which letter to drop.
That's MM.
Wolf Street, you know, because we don't have jurisdiction on that, and then they would have to apply by the ten feet off of the pavement, and probably would not be available there. So I think, in my mind, I think the better, the thing to consider is what are we willing to allow on Concord, and whether or not, as a village, we would allow them to come across. You know, there's, there's kind of two, two portions of the stormwater pond. There, there's kind of the wet pond area, then there's, I'll call it just more of a dry infiltration-type area.
And we walked both of those prior to the snowfall, and one was moist, not completely dry, but with the, the freezing temperatures, I'm sure that would freeze up nicely. And there are two rather large berms that cross in there that separate the two ponds, so they would need to be well-marked, and...
Berm slash jumps?
Yeah.
Whatever you want to do.
No, they're not jumps. But yeah, they're hazards.
So you're, we, we have to give you permission, the board have to, to be on Park Street to go, to go, because you're down, you're down there.
We're, we're currently crossing Park Street right here, and we have the trail ending here, so we can cross roadways, but we're not, we cannot run on them.
But I thought you wanted to go and, and cross up by the marsh there.
Yeah, well, so we've got permission from these landowners. The trail comes in down around this building currently.
Okay.
So, but we have permission from these landowners, so we would just reroute our trail to this portion and cross if we could get permission to cross.
I got you.
The, the wetland.
I'd like, you know, I'd like to see us do something for you, because I think it's good for business, and it's good for your club, and, and so everybody wins, but I'd really, I personally would think it'd be easier or safer for us to run as much of this off the road as possible. If you're coming down Janesville Road, you're driving against traffic. I don't know how chief feels about that.
We do, when we do run on the roadways, we have to follow the direction of traffic, so there would be...
You'd have to cross twice.
You'd have to cross, yes, but that's, but the law reads is we have to maintain the direction of traffic.
And I think, this was this debate we had with the county a couple of years ago. I think the stretch of that road from, I can just write now, from, from the QuickTrip down to Park Street is, I think the village owns that, I think. So, so technically, I think the village could give them permission to go on.
Highway.
I mean, Brian's unhappy about it, but they, technically, we could. But, but, but just right, to go the other way on MM, the county would have to, have to grant that, yeah.
When you share a lane with traffic, do you have a responsibility or a limit to stay over to the sign?
Yes, and we want to stay off to the side as much as possible, where there's hopefully a little bit of snow, to use our, our snowmobiles don't work well at all on pavement, so we're not gonna be on the, down the, traveling with traffic or in the traffic lanes, we're gonna be off to the sides.
So and even on the north side of Janesville Road, you still don't have a terrace, per se?
No, no.
So that, that would be sidewalk or somebody's front yard.
Mm-hmm.
So Janesville's kind of, I, I think maybe it'd be helpful for me if we could narrow this down to something that we could vote on, because as I look at it, it seems like there's definitely routes that aren't gonna work.
Well, the, the route to go through the detention pond, I think Jeff is saying that that probably would work, so that...
Yeah, yeah.
It sounds like they've got a, they've got a way of getting to that without having to come, come up Park Street, so...
But you can't get them to QuickTrip.
No, that's, yeah, that'll get you to headquarters, right?
Yeah.
Where, where does our jurisdiction start to drop MM, do you know?
On MM, actually, our jurisdiction, we do not have any jurisdiction on MM.
It's all county?
Yeah, for now.
I don't know how long a process that would take for the county to, to approve that.
It's actually part of a multi-year memorandum, memorandum of understanding that we have with county.
No, I think it's, Brian's, I'm like, getting this approved.
Oh, through the county?
Yeah.
Boy, I don't know.
I, I have to make a phone call to the county.
Well, if we can get you to headquarters this year, that's something.
Yeah, definitely. And if you guys are willing to work, if we can keep looking at an alternate route, whether it's a, a bridge somewhere, or if we're able to sneak on this backside and just go around the, the river bridge right there and into QuickTrip's parking lot.
So when you do, when you do like a, a bridge or something like that, is that a temporary structure, or is that considered a permanent-type structure?
They're typically a permanent-type structure, and that's that funding comes from the state.
Because, because I know, Jeff, you mentioned that it's, the Butter Factory Creek is actually a, you know, does, can get up and flow quite a bit, but it's not a, it's not a FEMA modeled flood, floodway, but there, there is a flood plain there to deal with, so you, you end up still dealing with that, whether you are, you know, wanting to put a small bridge, or still has to be able to not restrict the flow.
But even if it was nothing more than a boardwalk beside the existing bridge?
Times, right.
On the, on the east side of the existing bridge, big enough for a snowmobile to pass one way?
Correct.
You know, I always think of golf cart bridges when I think of snowmobile bridges.
Very similar.
They got raised a little bit to keep the skis inside, and...
Yeah. Yeah. I think it's a good idea. I think it'd be very, of course, you wouldn't get anything this year, and like you say, you know, might be a two- or three-year process with grant money and stuff, but I, I like those, you know, alternatives at least.
And maybe, you know, maybe if you get to headquarters, maybe Jamie would let you keep some empty five-gallon containers there or something like that.
Run across and grab it, yeah.
Yeah, you could run across and just hop off, any way to get back to something closer.
Yep.
So, so Jeff, I think if the board wants to do this, maybe we could ask to get a sample of, of an ordinance you have, rather than starting from scratch? Do you have a sample of an or, like, like Verona?
We could look into Verona's, yes. They have, they've got language in there.
Yeah, and then we could, if the board's interested, we could try to draft something to cross our detention pond and bring that back to the next board meeting, which would be on January ninth.
And maybe redo the map to get rid of all the routes that won't work, and specifically highlight the route you're recommending?
Well, do we need the ordinance to cross the retention pond if that's legally owned by you already? You could vote to allow us to cross that. The ordinance would come into play as if we needed to designate the road route?
Well, we, we would want to have some conditions on this. Speed, I think you indicated somewhere near that you're gonna hold us harmless, for example.
Yep, yes, and we also, we'll add you to the, as an additional insured on our insurance policy.
About times.
So that's all that, and we do that for several landowners in the area that are concerned about that, because it's all, our trail system's basically all on privately-owned land here, and the good gracious of our landowners allow us to run that, right?
What, what, what type of level of snow do you usually have? Do you run when the counties are open?
Yeah, so the Dane County Parks regulates when we can and can't open our trail system. It's based off of a six-inch base typically, if it's, and, and below freezing temperatures, so two conditions have to be met before the trail system can open or when they will close.
So, so other communities have allowed you to do this just on a, a simple motion versus having some type of a written agreement or ordinance between you and the community?
Typically, that's what we have seen.
Oh, really?
But if there's, if there are concerns, I mean, we could definitely go that route.
So we could do something on a limited basis, too, you know, try it this year.
We, we have done that as a sunset clause on programs, too, if...
Try it out.
Try it out and find out that doesn't work, when we figure something else out.
Okay, so show us again the route you'd like to have that gets you, is it the green line that runs?
Uh, so, yeah, we would, I'd come down here.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yep.
That gets you the closest, and that goes through our pond?
Correct.
Okay. So, so Holly, do you think we need some legal qualifiers on this to protect us, or do you think we could do a motion that will work for this year?
I mean, I would always recommend doing something in writing, but...
I'm really surprised you said that.
Matt's training or something, right?
Train, trained by Matt, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and what, do you have suggestions on what that should include?
I mean, it could be just an agreement or it could be an ordinance. We could look at what other communities do.
Okay.
But it might be helpful just to do an ordinance to clarify the route and any sort of regulations you want to put on it, time and speed, things like that.
You know, the one thing about an ordinance, if we're gonna spend the kind of time that it would take to draft something like that is I'm not sure until I actually see the snowmobiles run this and see if there's any problems, whether that's something I'd even want to commit to long-term. I'd almost rather work off of some sort of an agreement. Right now, put a sunset on it for this year, let Jeff go out there and walk the trail, see if there's any damage, see if Brian's gotten any calls from residents and then maybe next year, take a little bit more time and think about.
So what would you want in the agreement?
I, you know, I think what they've already said about including us as lost payable on their, on their insurance, their liability insurance, I think that protects the village in case anything happens on the trail and somebody gets hurt. And I don't, you know, I, I don't know exactly how you would structure this, but something that would talk about the fact that the snowmobiles stay on the designated trails and don't deviate from the designated trails. Speed limits, I think, are a good idea, you know, since it is village-owned property and I'm sure that it would be just common sense to keep the speed under 10 miles an hour.
Yep.
Something along those lines to guarantee safety mostly of the snowmobiles.
Proper signage.
Yeah, and protection of the environment around that trail would be the things that I'd be concerned about.
Don't you put up signs?
Yes, yes, we do have signage and there's a strict set of ordinance signage that we have to obey by and how it's marked and distance intersections. There's also, you know, a lot of rules for snowmobiles. If we ever encounter a pedestrian of any type, we have to slow below 10 miles an hour until you're 100 yards either side of them. And again, the, the DNR is out and they enforce all of these and I believe that their laws that the village should be able to enforce as well if they see violations.
I think there's a fair amount of complexity to this. I'm a little concerned that we might be, find ourselves in difficulty if we try to do this on the spur of the moment. That it might be better to wait for an ordinance that deals with all the concerns that we've expressed.
Yeah, I'd like to get this going because we have snow now and you'd like to get that set up. On the other hand, we've moved.
You guys have to protect yourself.
Before, kind of with an agreement and it's caused, it's led to problems, not with you guys, but in other cases. So it makes you, makes me a little wary of, of doing it too quickly, but I would like to get it done so you guys could, could get going. We don't meet until January 9th.
Right, the other thing we want to just make everybody aware of is that hopefully we get development in this area that could obviously impact the route, so we'd have to.
Yeah, be a year by year thing.
Yes, and, and we have to contact all of our landowners each year to get permission before we can mark anything again. So we, if, even if we don't put the sunset on, we would be contacting the village for next year.
Yeah.
Is it okay and is it all of our landowners or they can say no to us at any point?
Yeah. So basically we have, what, three and a half weeks or so to get to our next meeting? Would the board be okay starting with an agreement during that time, moving toward an ordinance, to get them back to us? I don't know if you guys would be willing to get some examples of agreements and ordinances and get them back to us as quickly as you could as a starting point?
Sure.
Because there'll be expense in this. If we do an ordinance, I'm sorry.
We'll have expense on our end with signage and things as well.
Do you, are, are you the, the club that runs the trail to Mulligan's?
We are, yes.
So maybe, maybe we should think about, I don't know if the board realizes that they run the Mulligan's too, maybe we should do it with both at the same time? Or is it, I mean, that, that's on, they're crossing, that's on private, but they're crossing Bergamot Boulevard.
Yes.
Correct.
Would that be something Brian, do you want to do?
Well, if we're gonna look at doing an ordinance, I think we should try to capture as much as we can.
Yeah, might as well do it.
The only, only thing they're doing is there's, there's crossing on the right of way is Bergamot, but maybe we should address both.
Yeah.
And I don't, we haven't any complaints, I just, just made me think of it.
And I believe those last week running on there are, are owned privately, so we've gotten the permission there. We do cross the highway, but we don't run on the road, but we're next to it.
Yep.
I would be in favor of maybe an agreement tonight that could at least get them the next three weeks. Because I, you know, I think it's, this is prime snowmobile weather.
Yeah.
Christmas vacation and. I would hate to have them wait till January before they could start running.
Yeah, there could be no snow by then.
Exactly. The last two years, we haven't had any to do anything with.
Quickly on Dane County, there's no doubt, so.
But I'm not opposed to, to a more well-thought-out ordinance as far as to go forward. I think that's a good concept.
So what I suggest for an agreement?
So I'm gonna make a recommendation that we approve allowing the snowmobile club to run that distance across the stormwater retention pond. I'd like to have that defined. We should be able to do that with GPS points or something?
We'd just do that with a, a more detailed map of the area.
Yeah, and for the next three weeks, I think at this point, everything else is gonna be governed by DNR and snowmobile rules. So I don't know that we need to go into depth about saying what the speeds are because the DNR governs that, because you're within 100 yards of people on both sides.
Correct, yep.
And the signage is gonna be up, that's gonna keep you on the trail, which is gonna keep you off the adjacent land.
Yep.
So it seems like there's already laws that are gonna govern the rest of it.
And you have speed signs that go up along this section, say 10 miles an hour?
Yes, yes, we will.
Order them.
Okay, yeah.
Insurance.
Yep, and we can have the insurance done right away and the signs are probably a week out, out. So we won't, we won't mark anything until we have all of our pieces in place. We'll continue to run this route until we can properly sign the approved route.
So is that a motion, Jeff?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
And Mike can, Mike can get together with Jeff and Holly and just word Smith something?
Yep, we'll bring some back next board meeting.
I would suggest that as you get things in place, you're ready to open, that you touch base with Jeff, be sure he's okay with everything you've done.
Sure.
And Brian.
We've been emailing back and forth and I can help them.
That's a requirement before.
Help them with a, a quick map and stuff that'll help you out too. Be in touch.
So any further questions on that?
So by passing this, we would be agreeing to immediately let the snowmobile operate according to property.
Yeah.
With a three-week sunset. So the end of this agreement would be January 9th, when we would come together to, to debate the ordinance that Michael drafted between here and there.
And governed by DNR and other state laws as, as applicable. Are you okay with that, Chief?
Yep.
Okay.
Holly, are you okay with that too?
Yes, that's, that sounds perfectly fine.
Think Matt's not here.
You say you're easier.
We haven't got the bill yet.
Matt would be going, oh, I don't think we should do that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Sounds like you're set to get started. Thanks, it's a good presentation, appreciate it. Okay, so we're still on item four, public appearances.
Yeah, good point.
And we're at item B from December 5th, Personnel, Public Safety and Protection Committee Meeting, discussion of possible action based on denial of operator's license for Tina McEwen. The motion was to have her appear before the village board tonight. So Tina, if you want to come up to the mic and home, please, like before.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Hi.
If you'd bring everybody up to date on where we are and, and.
Sorry.
How you want to proceed, okay?
Well, I was here two weeks ago for appeal about the denial of my liquor license, or I should say bartender's license, and it sounded like it was agreed upon that I come here and speak amongst you people. I appreciate your time. I can't remember who exactly was here and who is not. I do know the officer, I'm sorry, Lieutenant Copan?
Paganoff.
Thank you.
Yes.
She was one that was here because she is one that had given me a citation previously. So she also spoke positive on my behalf. Basically, I am here because I applied, I wanted to renew my bartender's license. It expired in June of this year. And I guess first of all, I should start off that I've been bartending in Oregon since 2001. Hacks is no longer existing, but that is the first place I started working when I got divorced. And there was maybe a couple of years I took off, but I've been working as a bartender here for like 15, 16 years. Two, three years ago, they needed a bartender at Hacks and I had let my license lapse, so I retook the class and got my license. Not a big deal. Well, it expired in June of this year, so I went to renew it and they said, well, now we have you fill out an application, so I'm like, fine. And then right away, she's like, you have to list your citations, violations. I'm like, for like five years. She's like, your life. I'm like, oh. So to make a long story short, I know that I received a citation in, I believe it was January of 2015, and I could be wrong, it was six months prior to the fire. And to make a long story short, that was for serving a minor. I did go to court, I did go in front of off, Judge Cox. I did card the minor. It was a very devastating thing to me because I'm the queen of the Carter's, so everybody was shocked that I served a minor. So that's actually why I thought I was coming in front of you is to appeal that. But apparently there is something that's on my record from, I believe, 97 or 98 with myself and my ex-husband and either one. I don't recall in like 2001 or 2002 if I actually put it on my application or if I didn't. I know why I wouldn't have just this recently in the last six months. I recall sadly the whole situation. I didn't think anybody was charged. I was actually the victim. My ex-husband was, I don't wanna say the criminal, but like the person that was being accused and I thought it was all dropped. So when I found out your license was refused for the citation in Rock County, I'm like, uh. I've lived here since 2000, 2001. Other than the citation at Hacks, I've never had anything, not even a speeding ticket, nothing. I've always been a good member of the community. My kids have graduated from here. I know lots of folks through, I worked for the Department of Revenue for 16 years on Rimrock Road. I just recently left a couple of years ago. Worked at Hacks 15 years. I now work for Jamie. He has a lot of buckets. And it's, you know, financially detrimental if you don't renew my license. So I guess I'm just wondering why it never came up before.
Yeah, so I was at the Personnel Committee meeting, but as a guest for another reason. And it sounded like it was just a mistake that when you fill out the application, you forgot to list that citation that happened all those years ago.
It wasn't intentional, it wasn't criminal, it wasn't like they aren't gonna check it out. I wish, I called and I'm like, yeah, I'm assuming it's for that citation about the minor. She's like, uh, no.
And that was the only reason that your renewal was.
It's because of that and she had spoken before. She's like, in 15, 16 years or more, I've never had any police contact. And I didn't, like I said, I don't recall, if I would have listed it in '01, honestly, it would have been because it happened two, three years prior.
Yeah, so what you're here for today, Tina, is not, not to have to explain yourself, is to get your license and, right, and to try to.
To work.
And explain to us the personal side of the system as far as the application goes. Yeah. So, and I know that this is really stressful for you and it was stressful for you the first time you had to go through it and.
I was debating about coming tonight and then I need the license, I need to work.
So I thought that you would, did a good job of, of talking at that meeting about, you know, how it probably would be good for the board to hear personally as opposed to a motion.
Yeah.
Because this is a personal issue.
Yeah, the, yeah, the reason that we, thanks Tina for being here. The reason that we kicked it up to this meeting was because Mike and Lieutenant Paganoff told us that it would have to be approved by the village board anyway, no matter what the committee said. And I thought Tina made a very compelling argument at that, at that, at the committee meeting, but since the whole village board had to approve it anyway, I asked her if she would come back, so I appreciate you coming back. Thank you. I know at that meeting, Lieutenant Paganoff, I asked Lieutenant Paganoff if her application would have been not been denied for serving the underage minor. And Lieutenant Paganoff said, no, you have to have two citations within a certain amount of time, so it would not have been kicked out for that. It was just because she did not list the citation so many years ago. And when I filled out the application in the clerk's office and she said that, I was there like 20 minutes. I was really nervous. Like as an example, I list, because like 16 to 22, I probably had like nine speeding tickets. So I said, you know, the last speeding citation I had was actually 9/11 on the way home from the Department of Revenue, September 11, 2001. And prior to that, you know, I had other speeding tickets, I just didn't know the dates. And, I mean, I was just really nervous. She's like, you need to list your whole life. It's like, I can't even remember a couple of months ago. So, I mean, there were, you know, there's nothing obviously big as far as any big criminal activity or deceit, and that's what I wanted you to know. It wasn't to be, you know, deceitful, it wasn't to be intentionally hiding something. I was shocked, like when I was talking to her for 10 minutes, I'm like, I'm still in shock, I can't believe this. I forgot about it, but I didn't. I mean, I know what occurred minute by minute. I just didn't remember because of the situation, I guess. So I don't know if anyone has any questions, but I mean, I'd, I'd be happy to make a motion. I don't know, what, what is the motion?
It's a motion to approve the license.
That, I would make a motion that we approve the license?
Yep, and I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're all set.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for coming, Tina.
Yes, thank you for coming, Tina.
Okay, Amy Sickinger, wanna come up? You'll be next then, Jason, I think. We're going in order till we get everybody that's here done. Okay, so I want to read this, welcome Amy. Public appearances from December 5th, Personnel, Public Safety and Protection Committee Meeting. I'm sorry, Gina, this is yours.
Go ahead, you can do it.
No, I'm sorry, this is Erin.
It is actually me.
It is, yep, okay.
Yep.
You're up.
All right.
You'll do better than I do anyhow, so go.
Okay, so this is a continuing discussion with village resident Amy Sickinger and having possible board action regarding concerns of speeding on Brook Street. And it looks like that our village staff has possibly come up with a recommendation here that we create a school zone within 1,000 feet of schools that are posted 15 mile per hour when children are present in a standard 25 miles per hour village speed at other times. So Ms. Sickinger appeared, what, have you been twice in the committee? Just once in the committee? With some concerns, you can see in the packet of speeding on, on the street and you live on the street, right? So she sees it firsthand. And when we talked at the committee level, Chief Yule had put out our old speed trailer and of course that, I think, probably slowed people down, but as soon as the speed trailer went away, people.
Exactly.
Became a racing den again.
It still is. I watch it every day. The school kids, the lunch break and right after school, they like to start from the corner by the, closest to the police department, go as fast as they can. I think they're doing it just to see if they'll get a rise out of the police department. They think that they can do it just because they're not gonna catch me right here by the police department. They think they're funny. I'm not amused. But it's, it's just become, it's such a major thing to me. The park, the park is immediately across the street. There are, all summer long, in the winter, not so much, all summer long, there is softball of some sort every single night of the week. And on weekends, almost every weekend, they have tournaments and soccer and everything else going on. So there are always cars parked over there. My vehicle's been hit parked on the street twice. I know three other people that have had their vehicles hit there. Thank God, no children have been hit yet, but kids, they'll, when they are running back across the street to their parents or something, they don't stop to look, they go between cars and the cars are all so close together, they just take off, zip in between and it's so unsafe. And I've seen near misses many times.
So if I could give you a magic wand and you could wave that magic wand and make anything happen on that street, what would you do?
I think my, the biggest thing I think I would do is put angled parking instead of straight-on parking.
And how would that affect the speed limit of cars traveling on the street?
It may not affect the speed, but the safety, I think, would be there. Since the speed has been kind of pushed off as not feasible to keep it at 15, I think that by angled parking, right now when people are backing up, you can't see. It's, it's, parking is very tight. Most vehicles there are SUVs, vans, pickup trucks, big vehicles. And when you go to back up, you, you're taking a chance just even starting to back out.
So with your magic wand right now, there's nothing that you could do to make this, to make the speed issue go away?
Other than speed bumps, and I've been told that's not feasible either.
So now-
I think, I think speed bumps are a great idea, but that's me.
So this is the first time that I've heard from you where you've started to discuss the way that cars are being parked? So this sounds like a next, a next issue that you-
Our next idea.
Concern that you have.
That was just our next idea of something to try to provide more safety somehow-
Yeah.
On the street.
And the safety concern was based on kids coming through the cars into the street, across the street?
And, and the fact that as fast as they're going, even, even if they raised it to twenty-five, which I really think is a bad idea, but not my call.
Well you just had a magic wand though.
If I did, I would, I would keep it at fifteen. I would keep it at fifteen, absolutely.
But, and that's what it is right now?
Yes.
And that's what it was the first time you came and saw us?
Yes.
And the times before that, when you wrote the letters?
It's just not, um, it's not a street that is well, well enforced, I guess, I don't, I don't know if they assume, since it's so close to the police department, that there's not going to be a lot of people speeding on it, I'm not saying anything bad about our police department, I'm just saying it's not, it's a short street, there's only, what, six, eight houses on it, I think, um, it's, it's a, it's a small street, so it's not real well enforced. And by, because of that, people, and everybody knows that it's not well enforced, even during, um, Summer Fest, Summer Fest is just a nightmare on that street.
So then you would use your magic wand to increase enforcement?
Oh definitely, yes, that too.
Well-
I have lots of things that magic wand would do.
Yeah.
I'd flatten tires, all kinds of things. Spikes out there, all kinds of stuff. I just, there's just so, they're, they are going, I, I know that Chief Yule disagrees with me, but everybody on our street that I cannot convince to come to the board meeting with me, they all keep saying, "You just keep doing this." We have no doubt in our mind that they are going at least thirty-five, forty, a lot of times.
And at this point, how many people have been hit?
None that I'm aware of.
And-
Oh, I guess a bicyclist got hit, I've only lived there two years, a bicyc- bicyclist got hit, I think, the year before I moved to here, but I'm, I can't, don't quote me on that, they were just telling me about that. It was someone backing out and wasn't able to see, sun was hitting just right or something, I don't know how that worked. But like I said, it just feels like it's going to happen any minute.
So Amy, do you think that, is twenty-five okay when it's not softball season? I mean, the problem is when the cars are parked there, right?
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's like any other village street, I mean, there's virtually nobody there-
Right.
Once softball's done.
Twenty-five would probably be okay when it's not that, I mean, they still, I think, go too fast, but if it were, if it were, like it says in here, being marked as a, um, school zone, and fifteen when children are present, that doesn't mean just fifteen when s- children are present during school hours, correct? It's when children are present at any time, or is it only during school hours?
I think most interpret that during school hours, yeah.
I think we were talking about that today, and I-
I was wondering.
Yeah.
Well, I'll tell you, when I'm driving, and I see a sign that says fifteen miles an hour when children are present, I don't wonder where the school is and whether it's open, like I, I slow down. My goal is to not hit kids-
You start looking for kids.
When I drive, and if I know that kids are in the area because it's signed that way, I tend to be more alert.
If everybody had the attitude, Amy wouldn't be hit.
I wish that wherever it is.
Yeah, and haven't we had that conversation as a village board before, when it comes, you know, when it comes to other parts of the village and trying to, trying to basically say if people would just put the phones down and drive their cars and, and pay attention and, and slow down, and, you know, all these citations that we've got off of, uh, CC over there by Alpine, is people not paying attention?
Yeah, see that's your magic wand?
Yeah.
Yeah?
We need one.
Yeah, well I'll tell you, when you come up with the plan that gets everybody to do the right thing, you let me know, because I think we can make some money on that.
Letting me throw balls out into the street when they're zipping along, and there's all kinds of things you could let me do to-
So this says, if I'm reading this right, uh, in our packet, there's the one slide that says total vehicles eighty-four hundred, average speed was twenty, minimum was eleven, max was thirty-six. So that's saying the average speed was twenty for over eight thousand vehicles, this is the ones.
And I still believe that's only because they saw the speed trailer, and a lot of people that I spoke to told me that they didn't know the speed limit was fifteen.
Oh yeah, that's a real unusual speed limit.
Everybody, everybody says that. I will agree, the speed limit signs, everybody that I've spoken to thinks that they're set off too far, we think they should be out on the, the bump outs, that, that then they might be more noticeable. I asked if I could put one of those flashing rope sign lights around it, they told me no. I've tried to come up with ideas.
You know, I, I agree, I'll let you go next, yeah, well go ahead, you asked before, you go.
Well no, the, I guess the difficulty and, and, because, because when Chief and I received the, the concern, um, from, from Amy, um, you know, we, we of course addressed it with the, the trailer to kind of see what's going on out there, and then we also both, uh, Chief and I kind of start taking that route a little bit more, you know, just as we, as I come back to the office, as he's heading there, and the, the difficulty we had is it's, it's very difficult to drive fifteen miles an hour-
It is.
If you really try it in, in the village, and, and it's one of those things that most cars idling will take you at or above fifteen miles an hour, and, and Chief's, and maybe, I just don't want to speak for him, but Chief's concern was that, how do we really enforce something when it's almost, I don't want to say it's impossible, but it's, it's, people, you know, can't, it's difficult to drive fifteen miles an hour, and so we were thinking, well, what makes sense? Um, it does fall within a school zone, which we found that out, it's, you know, it's within a thousand feet, I think you brought that up, and I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, because it does fall within a school zone, so we then can have that, that criteria in there, um, but, you know, and, and I agree with the, the, the idea that the trailer, when people see the trailer, I think some people slow down, I think some people just go, you know, go normally. Usually when we have speed complaints, we'll go out there and we'll drive it, and it's like, I can't imagine driving along here at forty-five miles an hour, you know, and it's almost, it's such a short zone, I, unless someone's, you know, drag racing out there, maybe, I'd be surprised to see that kind of speed out there. But, you know, the, the, the traffic trailer kind of showed that people, by and large, people are, are maintaining the speed. You know, I get, I get a lot of con- I get a lot of concerns from residents of speeding in their neighborhood, I think, myself included, would say, "People speed on my roadway," and I think it's one, it's more of a mentality that we need to be educating our residents, the fact that honestly, you can get anywhere you need to get to in this village at twenty-five miles an hour within five minutes, you know, whether you're going forty-five or twenty-five, you're going to about make the same amount of time. So, um, my fear of, of, of any time we start talking about limiting or speed bumps or anything like that, there, there are a lot of residents that feel exactly like Amy does, you know, is, "People are too fast in front of my house," and that's a very, it's very much of a concern. Now I think we have a special condition here because there is a large, um, percentage of people parking along, along Brook Street, so I, and, and I agree with you, with cars backing out can be a very difficult thing, I would disa- I would, I, um, I would say that angled parking is probably not the way to go because we have people coming from both directions to park there, and angled parking is usually, you're one way in, or what they're doing now is they're actually doing a back end angle parking, which is kind of the trendy thing, so, but it's still only for one direction of traffic, um, whereas-
Make it a one-way street.
Right, well-
My magic wand is out again.
Yeah, you can, you can do that too, um, the other alternatives that, that can be considered, um, you know, Amy talks about speed bumps, it's always a solution, it's used in other communities, um, speed bumps are, are not favorable on the plowing operations, um, but you can look at temporary speed bumps, and I know Steve's talked about that, is, you know, as far as an option, um, just as long as they're removed and taken out, you know, and then, and then put out back in the spring or something like that, so those are options to consider, um, I just want to kind of be thinking about, I, all these decisions made at the board level of what the ramifications that are, are that for other areas around schools, churches, parks, that type of thing, and, and what, you know, how that will affect, um, those areas as well.
And, and your thing is just, you know, um, people that live in neighborhoods with speed bumps, one thing, you, you, we, the board ends up doing that, you have to deal with the additional noise, and it sounds, I'm not exaggerating, you will get more noise from vehicles hitting trucks-
Probably.
Yeah, just, just so you know, I, I've heard people complaining about those ones they've been in, so.
I was going to say, when you said about the speed bumps, I don't know if there are different types of speed bumps, I was recently in Madison, or Pittsburgh, I don't know if it's Pittsburgh or Madison, there's a street that had, it's a fifteen hundred foot street.
It's man- a two-way, I think down near the golf course?
It's, um, it's between, uh, Fish Atrey Road and, um-
It's where the bike trail is Jeff.
And, uh-
It's, it's up by the, by the DNR's office, right?
Kind of, but it's the other way, the other way.
Yep, yep, I know where you're going.
But it's, it says at the beginning of the street, at the head of the street, it says, "Five speed bumps the next fifteen hundred feet."
Yeah, the speed platforms, yeah.
And they were, they weren't really huge ones, they were kind of graduated, and I went over them with no issues going the speed limit, and I'd, I'd like to think also that being difficult to go fifteen miles an hour, and almost impossible, um, I don't think that, that's any more of a defense against the law than ignorance is a defense against the law. I'm sorry, it's, I, I've lived there for two years and I have no issues going fifteen miles an hour on it.
So-
Because I want people to stay safe, not just me.
It seems to me that we've studied this, um, that we've timed it, we've done everything that we can from an enforcement standpoint to make sure that we heighten the awareness, and at this point, what we're, what we're considering is raising the s- speed limit to a standard speed limit and lowering it with a fifteen mile an hour sign when children are pre- present, and the only change really for the community is there'll be a sign up that says fifteen miles an hour when children are present, and that we could maybe-
School zone.
Post that in a more prominent spot, is that fair?
Don't we have that now?
We have fifteen mile an hour posted out there, I-
That's what I thought.
Yeah, we, we have fifteen posted now, but it's not, uh, I mean, everywhere in the village where it's not posted is twenty-five, it's, that's just kind of our, twenty-five unless posted otherwise, and, um, keeps that way until we have the, the fifteen, which I agree, I think it's set probably back behind the parking spaces and not, not out in those islands.
Yeah, and they're on the light poles or something, they're, they're way over.
And if people are crossing, um, they, they should be encouraged to cross at crosswalks, which are at the corners, they shouldn't be crossing in the middle of the street, that's jaywalking, right, so that's another violation if kids are-
But we have the very same issue on a Saturday morning on Oak Street.
Yeah.
It's, it's probably, honestly, it's probably about worse.
So there's probably not a lot that we can do at the board level.
Well, let's, we, what we did on North Bay Parkway Jeff is we had parking on one side of the street, that's why you, on, a couple years ago on, on North Bay Parkway, we moved, we moved the parking on the east side of the street, because we were concerned about ki- somebody, a kid running, you, you got to drive so slow when you drive through there, you decided to drive on a Saturday.
That's not even on the agenda.
No, I'm just saying, but, but this, this issue that we're talking about, you can find other places in the village, so it's just not unique to, to Brook Street.
Yeah, so, the way, in my mind, I think rather than take action on this particular street, it seems like we've measured it, we've talked about it, we've thought about it, we're really no further ahead today than we were the first day Sue came, in terms of Sue's concerns-
Amy, Amy.
I'm sorry, Amy's concerns, looking out her window, twenty-four hours a day, or however often, you're, you're up, we can't address those one-offs, you know, at, at the village level, right? So, how do we move, how do we kind of move forward from this as opposed to continuing to recycle the same information? In, in all fairness Amy, I think it's the best use of your time as well, right? Your letters are very thorough, you know-
I'm sorry I've been kind of crappy and stuff.
Well, it's, it's more so that you feel as if you're persistently coming back and not really getting anywhere, and I feel as if this is the second time we've heard this at the board level and we're, we're not really getting anywhere.
This one, this has only been at the committee level, this is the first, so this is, this is time for the board to make a decision, you can tell us to, the staff's proposing the school zone, you could accept that, you could do the speed bumps, so it's-
So, so here's where I'm at.
Yeah.
I think we should make it a school zone, move those signs out, when you're driving down there to softball game, you will not see those signs, and you quite frankly shouldn't, there's so much going on, if you're looking to decide those signs, you're not watching the road in front of you. Uh, I think I would investigate making no parking on, um, on Amy's side of the street, that you don't have cars parked there and kids running back and forth, that alone might be of help. I think during the non-software season, speed limit twenty-five is fine, I can tell when I ride down here in the summer, there's softball going on on my bike, I ride right in the middle of the road, because those cars, they can't see you, it's, Amy hit it right on the head, it's pickups, SUVs and vans, I don't care if it's angled or straight, they're not going to see it. I wash for backup lights, because I know they're coming out, and I swing over in the other lane, hopefully there's nobody coming. It's not much problem because there's not a lot of traffic there when there's softball games, because they're pretty much parked, but, and it doesn't take long to bike down across here, but, um, I know Jeff doesn't like this, but I think public safety should talk about temporary speed bumps in the summer, because if that keeps the kids from getting hit, it's well worth it, now other parts of the community, maybe other parts should have it too, uh, I don't know, and, I don't think there should be that in the winter because of plowing, I don't think they have to be.
Yeah.
But I could see on, I'm thinking the same thing Oak Street, they need temporary speed bumps, I think we can also-
Amazing.
Not do any place else in the village, but I'm saying that's the only place where we have a number of cars on straight end parking on a regular basis, because softball games four nights a week. But Mike's right, Oak Street is the same or worse.
And the only, the only other thing I've heard about people that live on, uh, streets with speed bumps, is this is what people do, they, they, well, some people find it fun to try to hit the thing at thirty miles an hour, that's one thing.
Yeah.
And they'll speed between the speed bumps, so, it's not, I'm not trying to be arguing with you.
Yeah, no, I know.
It's not the cure, I don't want people to think that we put them up and it's going to take out, take away all the speeding, but what you actually end up doing, I think, I think Jeff will agree on this, you, you push traffic off Brook Street, people will just won't, they don't want, people like driving on speed bumps, so they'll go, I should know you'd be happy with, right?
Well, and I, but I think too, when you start telling people they can't park on one side of the street, now potentially there's residents that use that parking spot.
Well, we, we've always done surveys.
For their families.
We do, we would, we'd do a survey before we did something like that.
And at the end of the day, you, you can't legislate people not driving the speed limit and not driving safe.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think that, um, our families having somewhere to park would become an issue because of the parking across the street, there, the only time the parking across the street is really even used is softball nights and soccer nights and, and stuff like that, um-
That's the time that your neighbors would have a problem with it.
And our side of the street, I would, I would say there's probably what, fifteen spaces maybe, if that, um, from the one corner to the other, um, because, like I said, there's only six, seven, eight houses on the street, um, so I don't see it affecting many people, uh, the people that I know that park on the street. My husband does just keep the sap off his carpet, he'd get over it. Trust me.
But we, we, we learned a hard way, we, the police department would do a survey.
Yeah, we ask. And the residents have to decide, do they want to do, to have no parking, to facilitate more safety for kids not crossing the street, or do they want to have the luxury of parking, there, kind of, would kind of be up to them, as far as I'm concerned, they could decide and they could live with it. So my suggestion is it goes back to committee, to look for more specifics that we make a motion tonight to request that we become a school zone and start there, we've got some time, it's winter, there's no softball for a long time, so, if we have time to argue with Jeff about speed bumps, then try to figure that out, and go from there, so.
Uh, I don't think we should change the speed, the speed there, I think we should keep it at fifteen, if you, if you're going to change it, then, then they're not going to remember, okay, then, then the twenty-five comes up and they can go as fast as they want, and then, they're not going to pay attention to that fifteen anymore. But I was going to comment, because I, I know, I go to a swimming class over at the pool, and a couple of the people came in and said, "Don't you go faster than fifteen, because I've gotten tickets there." So, people have gotten tickets there.
A lot of people complain because in the summer I sit out at my table, and I scream at people when they're driving by, quite loudly and vote, and I'm kind of verbal-
Apparently one of the guys in the audience screamed.
People nodding in the audience.
Yeah, I'm quite verbal about it, I, I made my language, it gets a little colorful sometimes because I'm daddy irritated after five or ten of them go by.
Okay, so on the fifteen speed limit, one thing that Chief has said, and this would need more investigation, but that, right now, it would be hard to enforce a fifteen mile an hour speed limit there, because there's no need for it.
Yep, it's there.
There's nobody parked there, there's nothing going on, uh, it's like any other street that's twenty-five in the village.
That, that, that sign is there though.
Yeah. But he said, even though it's signed, if somebody wanted to fight that in court, they probably would win.
Oh yeah, I understand that, but I don't think we should change it.
Because twenty-five is a reasonable speed this time of year-
Right.
On that street, because there's, there's nothing going on.
That's, that's Chief's opinion, right.
There's only houses on one side, other side has none, so, we have to think about that too, but-
The one, the one thing I was questioning on that part of it, how, um, just from my own sanity, I don't understand how it would be hard to fight in court, um, it's, it's in a, it's been that speed for however many years, it's the law, they broke the law?
Typically when you, typically when you lower the speed limit than what it is on oth- other village streets, you have to have some justification, I, I don't think, I think the villages came up with that speed limit. I, I wasn't here when it was done, I can say that.
It's been here a lot, huh?
I would say according to everybody, everybody I know that's been there for-
And I'm not encouraging people that have gotten tickets to fight it, but, but that is something I've seen in other places, that you have to, the judge may say, "Well, where's the justification for the street, this street's twenty-five, this is fifteen, it's exactly the same street, well, for example, Spring Street, we have the same type of, it's twenty-five here," so it's a, it's a, "Why do you have that, and where's the justification for it?"
Yeah, that's where the issue could be, and that's not a-
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
A definite decision that was a concern that he had, it could be hard to enforce
It could be hard to enforce that in non-softball season.
So it's just curious to me that, and I've debated in my mind whether I want to bring this up or whether I just want to talk offline, but I'm going to bring it up since you're here and since I want to try to do more in front of the community. You know, you came here originally because you were concerned that people were going too fast. We measured it and found that they really weren't on average going as fast as you thought they were. But every now and again, I'm sure there is somebody that does and that's going to happen. And now we're actually debating raising the speed limit 10 miles an hour for half the year. And that's going to be the net outcome of the next step. So at the end of the day, you're going to have to get to a point where you're comfortable that the village is responsive and that your voice has been heard. But how will you know you've gotten there?
When something is actually done. It's, I understand, I disagree with the raising the speed limit, but what he said makes sense. I'll deal with that. Right now, even Chief Yule said, or Jeff did, one of them in their emails to me that it may seem counterintuitive to raise the speed limit. And that having the speed cart wagon thingy there.
Trailer?
Yeah, that thing. Because it wasn't able to go into dark mode as he spoke of earlier. People do see it, people slow down. We saw, I agreed, they slowed, if that thing was there every day of the year, that'd be great. People did slow down. We, everybody in the neighborhood noticed that people were slowing down and that was awesome. So I don't believe that the numbers that they came up with were really true to what was, what normally is going on. Again, if they had one of the more modern trailers, maybe when it's in dark mode, maybe it could prove that I'm wrong. But I could sit out there and videotape it all day and I could prove it.
We just bought a new one, about half an hour ago.
I know, I saw it, I heard that. I was back there raising my thumbs.
Guess where the first place it's going to go?
I'm just ready to know.
It's under your house. And we'll find out. So you'll know and we'll know.
I've offered to let them park in my driveway, do what they need to do.
So I think go to school zone. I'm fine with going to 25. Bump it back to committee to talk about it some more as far as any more details as far as speed bumps, no parking, whatever it might be. And just because I think that doesn't mean that's the right thing to do. But I think that's worth looking at. Because I worry when I go down that street, especially after board meetings are dark in the summer and there are a lot of kids around and there's cars all over the place. So it just seems like we can look at additional things we might do. So thoughts on that?
I'm not completely convinced that a speed bump wouldn't be a solution. I know we've talked about this in previous meetings.
Yeah.
I'd like to know more technically the reason why it is not deemed to be an appropriate solution. But we can do that in committee.
Yeah, that's why I'm thinking take that back to committee. But it seems like right now staff is saying let's make it a school zone, change it to 25, it's winter time. It's like any other street in town. Move the signs out where they can actually be seen all the time, whether it's just cars parked in the softball. Any other thoughts on that?
I agree everything, but I don't think we should change it to 25. I just don't. It's just going to make, people will think it's always 25, even though they see the children where, you know, where it's always supposed to be 15. I just think we should keep it as it is.
Can we direct staff to send a survey to folks who live in that street about the one-way? Or does that have to go back to committee?
The board can do it every once in a while.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'd like that to go to committee first. I think that's just a safe area because that's a significant change in traffic flow. We went through that several years ago on just a couple of streets. And I think it would be good for us to talk about that first, if that's all right.
You know, the one thing you could do is not do anything tonight. I'm not saying this is the right thing to do. Get the new trailer, ask Brian to put it in, you know, dark mode and actually monitor it for a while. See, and see, you could do that. Not only the problem is there's not as much traffic on the street this time of year, but you could do that.
Yeah, but you did say lunch hour and before noon is our key time.
Yes, they are.
That's the traffic that picks up all over town.
Right.
Makes a lot of noise.
Correct.
Okay, that sounds like the right place to start. Let's get some more data.
When's the trailer come?
I'm not sure.
It'll be a while.
You think so?
Well.
And I'm not sure, let's see like...
I don't know if it had a...
Delivery date? Let me see here.
They had a...
I haven't seen that.
You do remember seeing it?
I don't remember.
Oh, yeah, I don't either. I'm not saying the board should do that, I'm just thinking that it sounds like...
I like that idea.
Oh, okay.
Others do. Then we got some more up-to-date data and like you said, it's going to go dark and we'll see what it reads.
It doesn't necessarily say that, yeah.
I'm not quite the perfect speed guesser as they're going by. But I can, I know when I'm driving 15, I know how fast I can get from this mailbox to this mailbox. I time people in my head as they're going by all the time. Trust me, they're way past.
Yeah.
It doesn't necessarily say, sorry, I mess with my little kid actually.
No, we can check on that and maybe Jeff can send us an email on when it's going to get here so we know, so we have an idea.
We'd want to make sure, obviously, dry pavement and stuff so we're not, so we're getting, I mean, like today with icy roads and stuff, people obviously are going to be going naturally slower. So we want to make sure we get it during a time where you're likely to get some good data on it.
Yeah. Are we in agreement that that's, we'll get the new trailer, run it in dark mode and see what we get from the data?
I think that's helpful, get more data.
Yeah.
In the meantime, we'll also collect where the signage is currently.
Yeah.
And take a look at it. We'll work with you, Amy.
I feel like somebody's, you know, thinking about doing something. And I just wanted to say, when you're talking about my street's not the only street, I do know that. It's the only one I live on that worries me. I do see Oak Street, I see that happening all year round too, especially in the summer when softball and soccer and everything are going on. So I do understand there are other streets in town that have the same issue. It's just I'm here to speak for mine.
Good for you, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry for calling you Sue.
Johnny Cash song, look at that.
Okay, so go to item 4D, discussion with Spanree developers. Jefferson Crossing, initial TIF request. And says the board may refer that request to Ellers for preliminary TIF cap analysis. So welcome again, Spanree developers.
Thank you. Again, my name is Brett Reiman, I was Spanree Property Group, a partner with them. Here tonight just to give you a quick overview for the TIF requests that we put in. I answer any questions you might have at this point. I know there's future discussions and further conversations that we'll need to have, but I thought it'd be good to at least give an initial discussion on that and to the why and to the what and how much. So the, after I'm done, just let me know if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. So the initial request was for $750,000. It's in the form, the request is in the form of bond financing from the village, which would be personally guaranteed by myself and Brian Spanals. The why, you know, why do we need it? Overall development costs basically make the project not viable without TIF. And we knew that going in, I'm not going to say we didn't. When Brian and I bought the property back in June, we knew the amount that we were paying for the land, the construction costs that were going to be needed. An infill project, we're going to put it over to the point of where we're going to need TIF. And we're okay taking that risk because there's already income-producing properties there. It's not the ones that we wanted, but we're okay with that as a fallback. And if we didn't get TIF, we just had to fix up the houses a little bit. Because they need some work inside, but we could rent those out as well as the commercial spaces in the back and be okay. So that was why we closed on the land without having TIF in any type of contract. And we're comfortable with doing that. Getting into the contract, the construction costs a little bit, we paid a decent amount for the land. Construction costs are high for a number of reasons, just because construction costs are high. Last couple of years, there's a lot of construction out there. We're trying to make a nice building, meet the standards of the village. There's a lot of brick on the building, it looks nice. It's infill, so there's not a whole lot of space to do construction. So when we're doing excavation, you can't just pile up dirt on the side of a parking lot and take up stalls. You gotta haul that away, hauling costs are high. So there's just a number of things related to the site, land and construction costs that just put it up over, make it a viable project. The benefits that we see, what you've talked about before are, you're removing blight, you're adding more homes downtown so people can utilize downtown businesses. You're adding to the tax base. I think we're adhering to the village and what they want to see from a standard going forward for downtown development. So all those things are pretty good benefits that we feel outweigh the TIF request. But again, we're open for any questions and thoughts that you might have with this request.
Any questions? I think you presented your hard cost and soft cost stuff was very clear and so on. And we typically refer these to our financial people to do an analysis, it's standard procedure.
That's what staff might have said, yeah.
Yeah.
I just have a small question.
Sure.
I think the plans are very good, but I do think we still need, the village itself needs more parking out of you.
And we are, thank you. You know, there's been discussions with other neighboring properties of trying to figure that out. There's been some discussions with staff on, you know, what we can do, what we feel comfortable with releasing to the village and for other downtown users to be able to have access to. So we're open to talking about that, we just have to figure out how many, where, what timeframe. All discussions that we can have and continue to have with staff.
So I just want to make a comment. I don't have any questions, it sounds like most of the questions are for this evening anyway. But having sat through a few of these now and having talked to people in the community, there, first of all, there's a misunderstanding of what TIF funding does. And I think that Bill Leibig does a great job of explaining that every time it comes up. So hopefully people are starting to understand why it's important for the village to invest with the public investors to make these projects come through. But I feel that this project and that you and your partner are, it's the most common sense approach to that when everybody wins, everybody wins solution that I'd love to see every time that I've seen. So I just want to thank you and your partner for being honest and forthright, for putting all your cards on the table and coming to the village in that manner so that we can come back in like kind. Because I think when those sorts of, when you can remove the sorts of how much profit can I get from you at the table and you can just get down to doing the right thing for everybody that's there, I think you come out with a better product in the end and that everybody gets a chance to win through that. And that you and your partner are doing that with the village and I just want to thank you for that.
Appreciate those comments, thanks.
And Steve, I was just going to say that, so people are watching this on TV, that they're projecting an estimated value of, when it's completed, at 5.8 million.
Yeah.
There's a little less than $900,000 of value right now. So the increment value would be about $4.9 million. So that's what the increment would be generated, almost $5 million.
And didn't it say a nine-year payback?
Correct, yeah.
And even your returns are reasonable.
Yeah, you're fine with pay-as-you-go.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we prefer the bond financing if we can work that out. But we'd have to work through our bank with the pay-as-you-go and whatnot.
Yeah.
And so if the board's okay, I'll send this to Ellers and then we'll just have a placeholder in there for the cost of the parking. I don't know if you noticed in the cover letter that the parking lot cost is sort of hanging out there. So we'll have to, and that's, you know, are we going to move the utility pole and things like that? So, but we can start looking at the gap analysis even without that at this point. If it's okay with the board.
Is that okay? I'll go to Ellers and go up there.
Okay.
I would agree with what Jeff said, you guys have done a really good job, we appreciate that.
And you guys have been very good to work with and responsive, so we appreciate that too.
It's nice when it goes both ways.
We don't see that all the time.
Everybody wins and everybody wins.
You will see that here.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
Okay, so you're going to be on up here pretty soon, Jeannie, because we're going to go to item 10, reported committees, 10A1. So reported committees, item A, December 1st, planning commission meeting, trustee carpenter. So Jason, if you and whoever else want to come to microphones and about lot 76 in Autumn Woods Fairway Estates.
All right, so this item is a discussion and possible action regarding approval of rezoning lot 76, Autumn Woods Fairway Estates. Third addition, from planned to development, from planned development to single-family residential. And it looks like we have a couple motions to consider. Should I make that first motion first?
Yes.
Okay, so my first motion, the one that's underlined, the two-thirds vote thing?
Yes.
Okay. So my first motion would be that by two-thirds vote of the board members that we suspend the rules and we have the first and the second reading at tonight's meeting.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we can do that now. All right. And then I'll make a motion for discussion that we adopt ordinance 1634 at tonight's meeting. If somebody wants to second that, then we'll have these folks make their presentation.
Second.
Okay. All right, now, do you guys want to tell us what you're doing?
Sure. I'm interested in purchasing the lot and the question. And the plan would be to build a single-family home. We currently live across the street in the Fox Broke Off Course subdivision. And I'd like to build a house on that land. So we talked to the seller and before we purchased the land officially, we wanted to make sure we kept permission to build a house. I don't want to have a lot that I can't do anything with. And the plan is to sort of have like a five-year plan and take the next year or so and tear down a lot of the trees that are there. There are kind of a lot of old box elder trees, not really nice-looking trees. Tear all those down this spring, summer, in the fall or the following spring. Plant a lot more trees that are more congruent with the neighborhood, look more aesthetically pleasing from the golf course as well as sort of putting a privacy wall along M. And then over time, pay off the land and then build a house. I have no idea on the size, probably at 5,000, maybe 6, but we talked about a max of 7. I don't think I'm going to build that big. And then be obviously respectful of the neighbors, build the house set farther back. So we're not going to block any obstruction for the golf course view. And we're not there to make enemies, we're there to sort of be part of the neighborhood.
Anything you want to need to say, Jason, that pretty well summers?
No, Brian said it great.
Okay. So any further questions or comments, discussion? So we have a motion in a second to consider the approval of ordinance number 16-34. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? You're done. We waited a long time to get that.
That's good, thank you.
It was easy. Okay, so now we go back.
You and the bike trail.
Yeah.
9D, Steve.
Okay, we're going to go to 9D on the bike trail. So now we have at least one person would like to hear that discussion tonight. So item D is Village Administrative Review of 2017 Projects. And item 1 is Exane, Oregon Rotary Bike Trail, the Badger State Trail. Bill Houda is president of Friends of Badger State Trail is here, sitting right in the front row. So he is very interested in working with us on this. So I'll let Mike pick it up from there as far as staff.
Yes, thank you. So we have been trying to figure a way to extend our bike trail to the Badger State Trail. And this started when Mark was still working here. Mark and I looked at a couple of different routes. And so I've been talking to Jeff over the past year. And we have determined that this route of going down Fish Hatchery and then Adams to the trail, you're having to deal with a lot less private property than if you're trying to go across the, go to the west directly across Fish Hatchery. And I have shared this map with Bill and with Mayor Arnold. And as I noted on the agenda, our goal is to meet with the mayor and Pittsburgh officials. And if they think it sounds like a good idea, then we'll have to talk to Dane County staff. And again, this is long-term, this is not going to happen tomorrow, even if this works out. Somebody may come up with a better route, but this is the one that we've been looking at. Once you get to the intersection of M and Fish Hatchery, you have signals there. And then Adams is a very lightly-traveled road. I've talked to at least one town official about that and he's looked at it too and said that it's lightly-traveled. And that would get us up to the trail and would help us to, you know, to really get to, one of the goals that we had when we built the trail was to make it into a commuter trail that people are able to use to get into Madison and back home, so.
Has any conversation been had about working with the county to go along M to Badger State Trail?
We will, no, not at this point, because we were actually, Jeff, until recently, we were thinking of just going west to Purcell Road over private property and that that's not going to happen most likely. So this is really, this is somewhat of a new idea. We will talk to the county about doing M. I know when Mark and I looked at it, it's, even though it'd have to be off-road, it's heavily-traveled, a lot of truck traffic on there. So we thought, well, you may as well, if you can, just go to Adams, which is a lot less traffic on there. And really initially, you could probably ride on the road until an off-road path was put on Adams. But we, yes, we will talk about that once we get, I think, as a courtesy, we want to talk to Pittsburgh. Because really, this is really not a village project. It's, but we know our village residents are looking at wanting us to do something with the extension, so.
Yeah, but all we can do now is provide encouragement to get this done.
Right.
I see us continuing to, there's a lot of support for this. So as it says in our agenda, we would talk to people in Pittsburgh and then if they're kind of on board, I think they will be, then we'll talk to Dane County staff. And I've had kind of some initial informal conversations with a couple of them already, encourage them to do this. So not that that's gone anyplace, but they know we want to get this done. And I think once they get the trail from McFarland to Madison completed, they'll have more interest in getting this done to connecting us to that trail in Madison.
Does that cost us anything?
What's that?
By adding, to change this from, you know?
No. This would be county and Pittsburgh or town of Oregon or whatever jurisdiction it's in.
It won't be anything for the village at all?
Well, I wouldn't want to say nothing right now, but I don't know what that would be. But it's a long ways away.
Just curious.
I can't recall the topography of Adams Road.
Doug, up to your mic, please.
I can't recall the topography of Adams Road, is it fairly level?
It's, there is...
Tilly.
It's hill. That's part of the challenge of getting over to the trail. Even if you go on M, it's, there's a good hill. So if you want to get in shape, totally right.
Yeah.
I mean, in a perfect world, it'd be great to be on the west side of Fish Hatchery and just, you know, connect into the trail that's already in, you know, on Fish Hatchery. But that's a pretty long route. And that would connect you up to the Capital City Trail at some point. So, again, you know, we're just throwing this out, if somebody has a better idea, we are open to listening to it. And we're going to try to, you know, get the city and the county excited about helping us figure a way to connect the trail.
I think your timing is perfect. I think Joe Parisi is very interested in biking and...
Mm-hmm, yep.
And the county as a whole wants to connect outline communities to Madison on safe trails. So like I said, I think this could be a good next step for them once that McFarland extension is done with the boardwalk over water.
Right.
That's a whole lot more expensive than this will be for them. So are we okay with going ahead and meet with Pittsburgh, talk with county and so on? Okay, we will do that. I know that makes lots of people very happy in the villages. very happy in the villages. Did you want to say anything, Bill? Okay. Okay, we appreciate your interest and support.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Okay, so now we're gonna go back to...
Steve, do you want to do, I think Loretta's here for the MOU discussion.
Okay, so that's under board comments.
It's under your, it's under 8A1.
Okay, so item 8, proclamations and announcements, item A is board comments, status of library, MOU. Mike and I and Matt met with Loretta Hemmelsbach, who's here, president of the library board, and Nikki, and Curious and Thule Shuda from the library board a couple days ago, and I think had a very productive meeting. We talked about best ways to go ahead, working in collaboration, build relationships, get input, give key players a seat at the table and so on, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong here, either one of you, but the agreement was, at the present time, the MOU would be pulled back, and we would move forward, pretty much like we have been doing in the past, which is a joint teamwork collaborative move going ahead. Did I capture that right? Looks like it, okay.
I think so, thank you.
Okay, so either one need to make a comment on that, or does that catch it? Okay, good, thank you. That was a good productive meeting, I think, to sit down together and do that, so.
Steve, may I ask a question?
You can.
Brad, are we waiting for Amanda?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can wait, Brad can wait.
Okay. I was gonna make him wait.
Oh, good, good.
Can I tack on a board comment?
Kind of like all the detentions you got in school, yeah, go ahead.
Doesn't relate to the library?
Yeah.
So driving around the village, I noticed that there's a fair amount of fire hydrants that are buried in the snow, and I just want to remind residents that it's their responsibility to clear the snow from those fire hydrants that are adjacent to their property.
Yeah, good point.
Yep.
Anything else under board comments? We'll get this one taken care of right now, and then we'll come back to 8B later on. Anything else on board comments? Okay. So now we're ready for item 5.
The minutes.
Okay, so item 5 is approval of minutes from December 5th, 2016. Will you motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 6 is approval of vouchers.
I have one question.
I gotta read it first, to get it on the table. So we have vouchers, night, the amount of $251,817.53 for approval, so do we have a motion?
We make a motion to approve that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jeff?
So there was a line item for $4,751.80 for replacement of furniture? Can you just talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely. So, as you know, I am somewhat new to the library here, so when we were going through the library to look at the condition of things as a general protocol, it came to our attention that some furnishings had an especially jaunty angle to them that may not be the most sturdy, and so we're looking at replacing some key pieces in, that patrons use in the quiet reading area, to bring them up to date and as sturdy as possible.
So was that a budgeted item?
It's from the library budget, it was budgeted.
So it's passed through the village? Is that how it works? How does the money flow?
It's in a separate fund. It's not part of the general fund. Was that one coming out of 202?
That one came out of 202 funds, yeah.
It's the money, that's the money the, the library gets from the county that passes through the village, Jeff.
Are you thinking, when you, when you make these, $4,000 is kind of getting close to a capital improvement?
Mm-hmm.
Are you thinking about how those kinds of investments are gonna transfer into a new space?
Absolutely.
As opposed to just buying what's gonna fit in the existing space?
That's correct, yep. We actually have the fortune of being part of South Central Library System, and they offer a certain amount of consulting just on look and feel for the libraries, and we brought her in. She comes free of charge to us and had her talk, we talked about look and feel of where we're at now. This would transfer very nicely to a future facility of any type, very flexible, sturdy, stylish. I can show you pictures, but I don't have them on me at the moment.
That's okay. I trust you. Thank you. And Mike, just as we move forward, thinking about these kinds of things, so in my mind, or rather than go through what's in my mind, let me ask you. How should I, as a trustee, think about expenses that are being made on behalf of the library, so that I am doing my due diligence for the village residents, but yet not getting too deep into the weeds?
Once we give the money to the library board, the board does, they get to spend the money.
And at what point do we give the money to the library board?
Basically at the public hearing when you approve the budget.
Okay, so then, so then in fairness, I could just say it was just a budgeted item, and then the answer would just be yes. We wouldn't necessarily have to go the extra level.
They could technically say to the board, the library's gonna buy the $4,000 of furniture, and they could decide to spend it on something completely different, and the village board have nothing to say about it.
Okay.
Per state law.
Right, thank you.
If I may interject, just to give you a little bit further perspective, you know, then you do have the opportunity at the next budget season to say, hey, you know, I don't necessarily feel like we're, you are managing the village's funds well, and in that case, that would be your right and responsibility to address that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, that's very well stated. Thank you. Any other questions on vouchers?
I have a question.
Yeah.
About the K9 pancake breakfast supplies, do the, so if we're paying for the supplies and stuff, does the income come back into the village, too, or is that routed through a separate account?
It's, the K9 has its own special fund, too. That's not, it doesn't go through the operating budget.
Okay.
All the revenue and the expenses run through the K9 fund.
Okay. Do you have any idea they made any money?
Oh, I'm sure they did. I haven't seen the revenue part of it, I've seen some of the expenses coming through, but I'm sure they did.
Oh, it's Brian.
Okay, yeah, it was a great event.
Yep.
Got some nice coverage, and I know that he stated that it's their biggest fundraiser, so I'm sure that they made a nice amount of money on it.
Always really busy.
Mm-hmm, that's what I heard.
Other questions on vouchers? Okay, so we have a motion second for vouchers, $251,817.53. Roll call, please.
Carpenter?
Yes.
State?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Brethauer?
Yes.
Woodrow?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes. We'll go to item 7, which is community input. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board at this time? We see none, we'll go to item 8, proclamations and announcements. We did board comments. Anybody have anything else at this time? We'll go to item B, staff comments.
Just the list of meetings.
Yeah.
No night meeting on the 26th, no board meeting on the 2nd, and then, so the first board meeting would be January 9th, and then we'll have the personnel committee, it'll probably, we'll be addressing Brook Street at that evening, and then the second board meeting would be the 23rd. And then just a reminder that for anyone that wants to use the village hall, we're gonna be closed December 23rd, Monday the 26th and Monday, January 2nd. And I wanted to note that Knox Boxes, which allow the fire department access into the municipal buildings in a case of emergency, Jeff had installed at the village hall, or will have, I'm sorry, will have. Will have. Village Hall, senior center, library, police, and public works buildings. Dan Olson has resigned from the park board, and I thanked him in an email for service to the village, but right now that means we have two vacancies on the park board, Dan's position, and we still need an alternate member, so if anyone's interested in serving the park board, they could send me an email, they would, and I'd send them the application to, to bring to the board for consideration. And then, I'm sorry, I should be running the meeting here, I'll ask Nikki to, sorry about that. Nikki should talk about number 5.
Yeah, 5 is a library facilitator meeting, so Nikki, if you'd go ahead, please.
Absolutely, thank you. So you may recall that I've mentioned in the past that the library is doing some strategic planning, and as part of that, we are interested in hosting a number of community conversations, the first of which happened with a variety of educators or people with educational-related interests back in October. We would very much like to invite the library, or I'm sorry, the village board members and members, representatives from the Chamber of Commerce to, to sit down at a conversation in which basically we hope to understand your aspirations for the community as a whole, any concerns that you have, and what you believe might strengthen Oregon. And then what we hope to do is take away from this ways in which we can help facilitate that moving ahead.
Could I make a suggestion?
Please.
First of all, a comment. Thank you very much for opening the discussion up to the community, because I really felt going to the central campus discussion, that the community felt like you were part of the process, a lot of good ideas came out of it. It was really great night, and you were there as well, and I felt that same energy with you. The conversations that I get from people in the community about the library actually start with not understanding who the library serves. Many times, the first comment that'll be made to me is, well, why do we need a library when all the schools have libraries? And they're not being used for four months out of the year, so that's a pretty elementary misunderstanding about who the library is and what the library does, and it might be good to back all the way up to that place and start educating the community from there.
Yeah, I think that's a very good point, and there are ways that we've been trying to reach out and do that through, you know, editorials in the newspaper, and the next level of conversation would be for the community as a whole. We will continue to put out information on our website about things that we have, and would welcome any additional opportunities to do that. We can go back, I can go back to the board, and we can talk about various ways that we can do that as well. I would like, if you are free, if you find yourselves available on January 30th, if you would consider being part of this conversation. This is part of something called the Aspen Report, Rising to the Challenge: Re-Envisioning Public Libraries, and it's a very planned method, and the second conversation is intentionally with the community leaders, so I think perhaps we can do both moving ahead.
Yeah, and you know, you've got this great platform here, too, where we go out through OCA to the entire community through cable access. If you could break, if you could break your message down into five, 10-minute increments, and you could put them together as modules, you could probably...
Like infomercial, like brief little, like...
You could do five minutes at a board meeting.
Those little, oh, what were those old messages on Saturday mornings with the music?
Like Schoolhouse Rock?
Schoolhouse Rock.
Yeah.
Don't make me sing, please.
And I know about Mr. Bill and how he's only a bill, and he's sitting there on Capitol Hill, like, yeah. So, yeah, if you can make it rhyme, so much the better, but I just think you've got a great forum here.
No rhyme.
To reach the entire community through OCA and educate them in modules.
Absolutely.
That maybe you could work with Mike and have a standing agenda item until we get through this process.
Yeah, I think that, I'm fine with that, if that works with the rest of your schedule, I'm very open to that.
Sure, be great.
Thank you.
Do we know where the January 30th meeting will be?
Oh, in Sue Ames' room at the, at the library.
Is that where the new furniture is?
It is not, alas, though we, we did get some excellent second-hand folding tables that we have in there.
Nikki will give you a personal tour of the new furniture.
Yeah, you could put Jeff the new furniture that night, that'd be good.
If it has arrived, yes, yes, we will, we will make you acquainted.
Just give him a good book, he'll be fine. Okay, are we ready for item 9? Anything else from staff?
Nope.
Okay.
So it's at the library, January 30th, 5 to 7?
From 5 to 7, and I will send out proper invites via email, but pizza will be served for participants. Though I do request, you know, some feedback, if you have dietary restraints, please let us know, I mean, we can get cheese-free pizza or gluten-free.
The board eats anything.
Yeah, we're not...
I'm just saying.
There will be no cheese-free pizza.
I'm just saying that we are more than happy to try to...
You just offended Jeannie, let me tell you, that's not a good thing to do.
Jeannie, you know I love cheese.
Okay, let's get back to order here and go to item 9. Just communication miscellaneous business, item A, discussion of possible action on creating Fund 433 for civic campus planned projects, and then the latest news regarding village acquisition of the former Methodist church property. So first, the Fund 433.
Yes, Lisa and I actually decided to propose this last week to the board. We can't keep running all these expenses through TIF 3 now that we're actually talking about the building, not the planning, we need to have a special fund. And we'll run the library through this, the village hall and senior center through the same fund.
Okay, so we need a motion for Fund 433 to be established?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And then, information regarding the property, it's all listed there, go ahead.
Yep, so we're, you know, pointed towards closing at 11 o'clock on December 29th. The Phase 1 started today, right, Jeff?
It's been ongoing, actually.
They got into buildings today.
We got to tour the buildings.
Yeah, yeah. And so, so I think the goal was to try to get them down by the end of the year, so we're gonna have, Jeff and I are gonna talk to Matt this week about how we, how to handle the closing if they're not done, because the whole escrow thing kicks in and so, yeah.
I've actually, I asked, I spoke to the engineer that was, that was just, wanted to walk through the buildings, take a look for onsite, see if there's anything that they should be concerned about. I let her know that the village wants to close by the 29th, and if there's any red flags along the way, that they should be letting us know right away, and she said nothing has shown, shown up yet at all, and, yeah. And then I don't know, any comments on, I did meet with the seller, as well as the contractor that they've selected to do the demolition. They've actually had some individuals out there this week doing some additional asbestos rehabilitation, or asbestos...
Abatement?
Abatement, yeah, thank you, that was the word I was looking for. And, you know, he confirmed that we will be given an asbestos-free site. And we talked a little bit about the demolition, we looked at some of the trees, and you can kind of see, kind of a point-by-point of what we looked at with the utilities, and, you know, grading. There is one spot on the property where there's a fairly significant retaining wall, and they wanted, they kind of wanted to leave it there, and I said, no, we're taking everything out. So they're gonna take that retaining wall out and then bring some soil back up against, against that, because that's right up against maybe 15, 20 feet away from a really large oak tree. And I stressed with them that our desire, at least at this point, we want to be able to save as many trees as possible, only because we don't know where the buildings, what type of buildings, where they were gonna go and everything like that, and there's some, there's some very nice trees up there, and then there's some other trees that could probably easily be taken down and not have a big loss, so. But things are moving forward very nicely.
Good, thanks, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff?
I really appreciate more of a comment, I just appreciate the update and the thoroughness of your comments, it was really helpful for me.
And I did send this agenda to Ray and to Laura, so they, I'm sure they distributed it to the neighbors, so they know it's going as well.
Okay, good. Okay, we'll go to item B, which is information only, notice of claim and statement of relief. Patrick Makavec and Monumental Enterprises has been forwarded to village's insurance carrier.
And then, and the insurance carrier has assigned it to Stafford Matt's firm to handle it.
Okay.
To a litigator there.
Okay. So go to item C, review of master calendar and preparation of 2017 calendar.
So the board can see, I think we accomplished a lot of things this year, and then we have a lot of things to start working on for next year. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just, more, again, more of a comment, I just don't think you can celebrate the successes enough. I think it's really easy for boards that are working well together to get a sense that this is the way it always goes, and I just know it doesn't. And some of the milestones that we've ticked off in this last year have just been nothing short of impressive, in my opinion.
Yep.
So I want to congratulate everybody on the board for...
High five, Jeff.
For working together, because I really do feel like we work well together, and we get a lot done, and I appreciate that.
So I was talking to a person Saturday night that works in lots of different communities and capacities like some of our people here do, and they said that Oregon is the best place to work with people as far as staff, residents, and the board.
That's huge.
It's a real compliment.
Yeah.
Given how so many things go, and things you hear of all the distress and difficulties and stuff like that, so.
And we heard that from a developer tonight.
Yeah.
He was genuinely surprised of how pleasant, at least, we are to deal with.
And we can, if we need to be tough, we can be, we do it respectfully.
You can be tough, but still be professional about it.
And we do that, so that's a compliment to the board, the staff, department heads, residents, and so on, so. Good for us.
Yeah, I was just focused on the board.
Read that back.
I'm taking back my high five.
That's another high five.
Okay, so we'll go to item D2, intergovernmental agreement, Town of Oregon.
So we, the staff's been having some very initial discussions with a town official about doing a bond agreement, or bond, intergovernmental agreement... about doing a bond agreement, or, or bond, intergovernmental agreement, uh, because we have some annexations that will be coming. And, um, I was just looking at my calendar here, I plan on having, uh, Mike Slavney here on, at the January 23rd meeting, to talk about a number of things, including this interg- intergovernmental agreement. He's just done a few of them in a couple of other communities, and we're sort of been using those as models. And, uh, the goal here is to, um, give the village and the town officials a comfort level of where we're looking at the next 10 or 15 years as far as growth. And, and Mike will have a lot more, we'll, we'll talk a lot more in-depth, uh, in-depth at that, uh, meeting in the 23rd, but Mike, so.
Okay, good. Any questions? Just go to item three, annexation of forward development property, which is 75 acres west of Oregon Parks neighborhood, and the Hermsden Conservancy Park property. Uh, says anticipate receiving annexation petition early 2017 for the forward development property, and there's a map on our packet that we can look at if we haven't already, as well as for people watching online, so.
I do want to thank Jeff for doing all these maps, I bug them. I rather basis to do math for us, now that I know he knows how to do these, they're very helpful, and (laughing).
So, is the annexation for both the forward development property and for the Hermsden property, or just?
The, it, it would just be for the forward development property.
Forward development, okay.
Yep. And, uh, I know there's been some, uh, for better term, rumors flying around the forward development property, so, so I thought it was important to get this on the boards-
Yeah.
-and, uh, agenda. And then Jeff was good enough to show the, the future site of Will 6, I know that's come up a couple of times about the location of it. That may actually get, may get tweaked a little bit, uh, depending on the development, um, which is, it's not a big deal, we'll figure that out with them, as we're going forward, so. So they would, they would come to the village, and, um, they would seek annexation into the village, uh, if that's approved, we have to go to what's, uh, called CARPSY, Capital Area Regional Plan Commission for Urban Service Area Amendment. And then we've come up, the staff's come up with an idea of to how, from this development and other developments, uh, that, that will probably take place in the area to help fund the conservancy property. Um, and, and just so you know, we, we would not anticipate, um, actually taking the park over, it, it could be 10, 15 years, to be honest with you. Yeah. They're, they're gonna continue to live on the property. And the idea is that, um, we still have to figure this out, and staff, staff will, that we'll figure a way to, uh, as I said, to generate some revenue to help pay for the conservancy park, the maintenance of it, sorry. Have to pay for it, the, the maintenance of it.
Okay.
So can you just give me a two-minute, um, benefits and risks of doing annexation? Like, from a trustee's perspective, what, what should I be thinking through as somebody's calling on me to vote?
Yes, true, we haven't, we haven't done one in a while, that's a good question, yeah. Um, well, the benefits is that we, we have, um, additional lots to develop, and we have, we have growth, and, and with the property tax cap in place, that's how we live, we live off our growth, um, which is important. Um, it provides, um, school kids for the school district, which is very important, because that's how the school district, uh, funds itself, is through, through chi- children, the state. Um, the risk is that you, you annex too much at one time, and you, you impact services, so you gotta be careful about that. Um, and you can, um, you can affect the, the relationship you have with, with the town, uh, and that's why we're trying to do this agreement at the same time, Jeff. Because the, the Town of Oregon's been just a fabulous partner to us in so many things, that we want to be very polite to them and respectful to them as we go through this process.
Thanks.
That was less than two minutes.
Oh, thank you.
That's all Jeff gave you, I want to be sure.
I know, thank you.
Two minutes is a really long time. Unless I'm talking, then it seems like it's forever.
I was gonna say, I have an idea, uh, folks.
I agree.
It's called an egg timer.
Yeah, I get my timer out, Jeff starts talking next.
Okay. So, item four, Jefferson Crossing, specific implementation plan will be at the January board meeting?
Yeah, I think actually, I bet you, I, I felt my phone going off, I think we got that today, uh, this evening, and that's gonna go to, go to planning in January, and then I would think it'd be coming to the board.
Yeah, okay, good.
Yep.
That's moving very long. Uh, door in Phase 1, SIP in 2017?
Yeah, there's nothing, uh, exact when that's gonna happen, but I, I, they're just working on it, so it's gonna come in 17 at some point.
And then, any questions on either of those? Item six, uh, Chamber and Village are working with the Coyle family on potential hotel and apartment complex on Park Street in TIP number four.
So-
Again, there's a map in our packet for us, as well as for, uh, people watching online.
So board members who were on the board more than a couple of years ago, this is the site we looked at with Paul Lynch, and that just, it just didn't happen, you know, done, he's gone, yeah. And that's why when the Stoneyville guys were here, I just wanted to, I wanted to make a point that, you know, this route that they're gonna maybe use may not be available, or, or, or may the board may not want to have it, you know, once this all happens out there, so we'll have to see. But we are starting to work, and I want to thank Judy again for all her help on this, uh, with the Coyle family, great, just great people to work with, they've owned the property for many, many years out there, and, uh, so we're looking at possibly doing a, a, a hotel of, you know, 75 rooms, and then an apartment complex behind that. And so, we're, we just had some very initial discussions with them, I know they're doing soil testing out there, I think, I think Jeff's gotten a call or two about the soil testing out there, so it's-
Yeah.
-another reason, sort of to get this out, that we know what's going on, there's, they're, you know, they're trying to test the soil for a hotel site and apartment complex.
How much of the work that we've already done can you share with them to help fast-forward the process for them? Like, for example, when you said they're thinking of a hotel of 75 rooms, my first thought was, we've already had that conversation-
Yep.
-and we got it down to 52.
We, we gave them the, the agreements, or the, we gave them the actual agreement the board had approved.
Okay.
Yep.
So they have it all?
Mm, yep.
Any other questions on that? Okay. Uh, item seven, playing fields, village staffs meeting with local sports organizations as a follow-up to Vandoval's report on playing fields?
And, and that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Item eight, general site improvement plan, Keller Alpine Meadows Park, uh, we have a copy of the plan at our places tonight. Uh, it'll be in our January 9th, our next board meeting for a discussion, and we should bring that with us to that meeting.
Yep, so this, if you would please, this report here, yep.
Item nine, expansion of business park west of Cusick Parkway, uh, village staff is contacting Licon and Alpine Dairy property owners.
We, this is the property that's right to the west of the bike trail that goes along Cusick Parkway, and, and, you know, we, we're getting, uh, I know Judy does, Judy does too, the Chamber does, that we're getting inquiries of, uh, of companies that need a bigger parcel, which is not available anymore in the current park, so, um, I think we're gonna reach, I may ask you to help me reach out to Alpine Dairy Steve, and, and then I, and I want to reach out to Licon, because we have been such great partners with them on the, on the current park, I want to see if they want to partner again with us on the, on the west side of Cusick Parkway.
Okay, good. Item 10, completion of civic campus plan and updating capital improvement plan and five-year plans.
So staff's working on that, uh, Lisa and our, our, actually Lisa has plugged in all the, um, capital improvement plan, uh, I, uh, requests from the department heads, and we're gonna finalize that over the next couple of weeks. And then we will, um, have, I'm not sure if we're gonna have Mike, um, and we're not, we're not gonna finalize it, but at some point we'll have to have the board adopt a, a final civic campus plan. And then we're gonna have Jim Mann come to talk about the, and we're gonna talk about this a couple of minutes here, the five-year plan at, at a meeting in early 2017, and then also talk about the borrowing that we have to do for, for next year's project, so. That's probably gonna be, probably the second, maybe the second meeting in February, first meeting in March, somewhere in there, something like that. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So we're gonna be busy.
Yeah, I was gonna say, lots of things to look forward to, never a dull moment.
Yep.
Item E, discussion possible action regarding the 2017 Employee Assistance Program Agreement, uh, the motion is to approve that with Family Service Madison, the amount of $2,200, which is, I think is 20, $22 an employee, right? That's how they break that out. The funding is in the 2017 budget, so we would need a motion to bring that forward, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And we've, I don't know how long we've been with them, but the feedback has been good at what Greg Chisholm has done, his name is on this, and-
Yep.
-it's a, I think a very valuable service, and it's a really good business for employees.
And he also helps us do the, every other year harassment training as well.
Yep.
How to harass properly?
Pardon?
How to harass properly?
Yes, he's really good at teaching and doing that.
Yeah, that's good. Know that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item F, discussion possible action regarding capital improvement, five-year plan, uh, recommended motion is to prove LR's proposal for capital improvements plan, the five-year plan, the amount of $7,500, funding is in the 2017 budget.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any questions? We've done this before, it's been very helpful.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item G, uh, discussion possible action, recommended motion is to approve disposal of old water meters.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
You didn't want to go through all the serial numbers?
No.
Okay.
We'll pass on that one. So, next is item H, discussion of recent Oregon Observer article regarding property taxes. Uh, village administrators note, reminder to village residents that for village services, your tax bill is increasing $52.18 for an average valued home. $200 increased referenced in the recent article in Observer is a total tax bill which includes all taxing districts. Uh, the village represents 25% of that total bill, and our Facebook page does have examples of tax bills, so article was a little wandering.
I, just a few, a few people, when they saw it, because it said Village of Oregon, over $200 tax bill, thought, are, the village's taxes were going up versus, versus the entire tax bill, so I just wanted to point that out.
So what item is Brad on?
Oh, that is the last item, Steve.
Okay, so item 12?
We don't have to do I, J, K, L, M, N.
I was just gonna bring item 12 forward, so we can get Brad, the audience, to come forward.
Yeah, 12A, Steve.
Are you ready? Okay, come on up. So it's item 12A, conceptual discussion with Amanda Crompton, alcohol beverage licenses request for the Brad Willey project at 748 Cusick Parkway, regarding the proposed painting woodworking studio that would offer the ability to purchase and drink wine during class workshops. So there's some background there, I assume we've all read that, and I'll let the petitioners go ahead and talk to us about it.
So I guess, kind of why we came to the board today, um, is just to kind of see what your guys' thoughts are on if, uh, if you guys will allow liquor license or not, um, it's kind of expensive, so.
We have a lot of, yeah.
Yeah, before she puts the money down, she kind of wants to get a feel for what you guys think. That's why we're here.
Yeah, and it's the new state law, it's not refundable now, so once you give it to us, it's ours, right?
Yep, pretty much.
Yeah. And we would not want to do that to you, just so you know.
Yeah, it's a lot of money.
$10,000 is the cost of the license.
Yeah.
Well, that's the application fee, right?
Yeah, and then it's additional 600, I think, per year.
Right, per state law, Doug. And, and in the past, we used to build to do what's called, you know, some type of grant back to the applicant, and the board has refunded it, I think, two or three times. It's the very last session, the state passed a new law that you can't do that anymore, so.
So I think from, from a transparency standpoint, my position is that, um, we have to, we have to be careful that we're not always issuing licenses every time somebody has an idea where it might be appropriate. And, and then what happens is, is that you, you wind up having so many different drinking establishments that it actually affects the culture of the community that you're living in. And there's documentation that I've read that supports that, that, that that can happen. However, I, I don't, I, I would not stand on, on that issue if I felt that the board in general was supportive of the license, because I'm more concerned about the board being, about the board being, um, unified, and about not obstructing the, the progress, when I feel as if the majority is sensing we should go in a certain direction. But, but I would make my, my comment that I feel as if keeping alcohol licensed establishments centralized in, in a downtown-type area makes the most sense, and as you start to get further and further out away from there, it starts to make less sense to some point where it starts to become detrimental overall. So those would be my comments.
Yeah, and there is, there is clear research that the greater the density of licenses, the more problems you have. Uh, that clearly is on State Street, you know, it's clearly an issue. But as I looked at that a couple of years ago, that includes in small towns, that happens too, so, uh, and this obviously increases, uh, density. Uh, that having been said, um, I think a big part of how a license plays out, let me back up one step, I'll come back to that. Kind of on average in the US, uh, and across the nation in various states, average number of licenses per birth, there's 1,600 persons per license. In Wisconsin, there's 400 persons per license, we have a lot of liquor establishments. Uh, how does that impact this license? I don't think it really does. I think a thing that really impacts a license is how the proprietor handles that license in a responsible, respectful manner. Uh, I've known Brad for a long time, he's a high-quality person, and that, for me, uh, would cause me to be okay with this license. Not jumping or joy-keen about it, but that's just the way I am. But you've got, and I don't know Amanda, so I don't mean to, to not say that, but-
And we don't want to run it like a bar at all, it's just, um, more like the paint studio, optional one or two drinks, and then they're done.
Yep. But you have to know that once you have the license, you could start running it like a bar, because you got the license.
Well, act, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead. I, I talked to Matt about that, you, you could put restrictions on it.
Yeah, I was gonna wonder about that, too, if we felt we needed to.
And I wouldn't want that either, because I'm still trying to run a truck shop next door, and I don't want a bar-
Yeah.
Right.
-next door, you know, so, so I think, and I would understand if there's restrictions on that, but I would, I don't want it either as a property owner.
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't want a bar there, but, um-
Actually, Matt made a good point when I was talking to Matt on Friday, he, he made two good points, he said that, um-
Well, that was a banner.
I know. I Know.
That's A Banner Conversation.
I Know.
Back To Back?
Back In The Same Discussion. The Whole Idea About A Painting Studio, So That's How Amanda Can Have This, But It's Defined As A Painting Studio, So It's A Little, You're Having A Wood Studio Versus Painting, So It's A Little Gray, But I Think We're Okay With It. But Matt Made A Good Point That The Board Gives The License To Amanda That We Shouldn't, Well, It's Up To The Board, But Sounds Like Jeff Probably Would Agree With This, That You Don't Allow Then All Of A Sudden Have The Room Rented For Birthday Parties, Something Like That. You Would, You Know, It'd Be For Her Operation And That Be It.
So What You Want To Know Tonight Is It Looked Like The Board Will Be Okay With The License? And You Know Where You're At. And I Would Long To Take A Look At Some Restrictions, Like Someone Says Mike's Talked About Already And Talked To Matt About That A Bit More. And Maybe Even You Could Propose What You Think Would Be Reasonable Restrictions, You Know, How You'd Like To Operate The Place, Like You Don't Want It To Become A Bar, So That Type Of Thing. And You Won't Be Sponsorizing Birthday Parties And Celebrations There With Cakes Of Beer And Away You Go. Does That Sound Doable For You To Give Us Some Ideas On What Would Make That Work?
Yeah, I Think If There Was Some Type Of Birthday Party There, Alcohol Wouldn't Be Served Or Something If It Was For Under Kids.
Yeah, So As It Goes Forward, It Stays What You Start With. Because Once A Person Has A License, Things Can Change. You Know, There've Been Restaurants In Madison That Were Quite Successful, Business Tailed Off And They Started At 10:00 PM, Became, They Brought In Bands And Had, It Got Pretty Wild, To The Point That Some Were Shut Down. So, And I'm Saying You Could Do That, But Just, You Know, What Do You Need To Put In Place That Will Satisfy Us Going Forward It's Going To Stay As You Have Talked About It, Pig?
Okay.
And That Being Said, I'd Be Okay With This. So How Is Everybody Else?
Yeah, I'm Fine With That. I Just Make Sure That Amanda Knows All Of The Hoops That The State Puts You Through With A Liquor License And Make Sure You Do All Your Research On That, You Know, The Inventory, The Locked Up, You Have To Buy Through A Distributor. I Know That We Recently Gave A Liquor License To Someone Who Didn't Know All That And He Was Really Shocked At All The Hoops He Had To Go Through.
Okay.
So Research The Hoops Before You Make Sure You Want To Do This Because There's A Lot Of Paperwork And Steps Involved. Wisconsin Has The Most Strict Liquor Distribution Laws In The Country.
Which Is Ironic Because We Drink The Most.
I Know. Well, It's All About Who Makes The Money.
I Could Resist Saying That.
Distributors.
Yeah, Right, Yeah. And Look Through Our Application, They're Pretty Complete And Thorough, So Be Sure You're All Set On That. But Everybody Knocked Their Head That If You Go Ahead With That License, You Put The $10,000 Down, That The License Will Go Forward With Appropriate Restrictions. I'm Sure We Can Work That Out. I Don't See That Being A Problem.
And She Doesn't Get The $10,000 Back?
No. Once You Pay, It's Gone.
And That's A State Statute, Not A Village Argument.
Yes, That's Correct.
That's Right, Yeah.
So Good Luck.
Yeah.
And I'll Bite My Tongue On Our State Legislature, But... No, I Won't, It's Another Bone In The Thing.
That Lasted About That Long.
I Know. Okay, Anything Else You Need?
I Think That Was Good.
If You Have Questions Going Forward, Feel Free To Give Peggy A Call Or Candy Jones A Call, They're Very Helpful With The Liquor License Stuff Too. They'll Help You Out.
Thank You.
Okay, You're Welcome. Thank You.
Thanks.
Thank You.
So We Were Down To Item H, Right, Mike?
Yeah, We Were Down To I.
Okay, We're On I.
Yeah, The Dirt.
Discussion Possible Action On Keller Alpine Park Field Disposal. Recommend A Motion Is To Authorize Hogan Excavating Of Stone To Remove Up To 400 Cubic Yards Of Fill Material From The Keller Alpine Park Field Disposal Piles. Hogan Excavating To Work With The Village Of Oregon Public Works To Coordinate The Removal And Any Cleanup Of The Area.
What's The Fair Market Value Of That, Jeff?
Does It Have To Be Seconded First?
Yeah, We Need To, Well, First Need A Motion.
So I'll Make The Motion For Discussion.
Is There A Second?
Second.
Thank You.
What's The Fair Market Value Of That, Jeff?
Yeah, Thank You. You Know, It Really, It's Not Considered Super Great Fill Material. I Don't Think, I Think The Fair Market Value Would Be Whatever Someone Is Willing To Haul It Away And Pay For That Cost. We, This Is Land, This Is Fill We Actually Originally Offered Brad And He Had Someone Look At It And For One Reason Or Other, They Said No, They Weren't Going To Be Using It. Like Maybe They Needed More Structural Fill. But, So He Actually, I Think I Included It In Here, He Said He Was Not Going To Be Taking It.
I Will Say That If The Board Doesn't Want To Give It Away, It, No Offense To Other, We Don't Really, It's A Board Decision. We've Gotten Some Complaints That This Is Actually Being Driven By The Board Asking Us To Get Rid Of The Dirt. We've Been Collecting It For Years Because We Thought We're Going To Abusing It On The West Side Community Park And We May At Some Point, But That's Not Going To Happen Tomorrow. And We've Got Some Complaints That It Looks A Little Unkept There, So That's How This All Started. And So I Don't If You Want To Charge For It, I'm Not Sure He Would Pay For It.
Right, I Don't Think, When You Start Charging For It, Then You're Trying To, You're Kind Of Putting Some Sort Of Statement Of What Kind Of Quality It Is And Everything Like That. And It Varies Back There. There Could Be Some Black Dirt, There Could Be Some Clay, There Could Be Some Hunks Of Old Concrete.
So Here's My Concern, Right? Because We're Going Into The Central Campus Discussion And Potentially Doing A Lot Of Infrastructure Improvement. I Would Hate For You To Come Back To The Village And Say We Need $3,000 To Buy Fill, Knowing That I Gave It Away Three Years Ago. That Would Feel Bad To Me.
Sure.
So If You Can Tell Me What The Value Of The Fill Is Relative, If You Had To Go Out And Buy 400 Cubic Yards Of Fill Material, What Would That Cost? And If You Say, Oh, That Would Cost $400?
$10 A Yard, Probably.
So You're Talking About $4,000? So Conceivably, Could You Come Back To The Village And Ask For $4,000 To Buy Fill?
Yes.
In The Next Few Years?
Well, Conceivably, You Know, I Think That's Always A Possibility. Now, If We Needed Structural Fill, Would We Be Using That? Only If We Had A Geotechnical Engineer Kind Of Certify It And Say, Yeah, That's, You Know, Viable Fill. You Know, The Problem Is, Is It's Not, Sometimes When You Get Fill, It's All From One Area, Say From A Large Excavation Somewhere And You Had To Just Stockpile It Somewhere. A Classic Example Is What They've Done Out At Beehive Out There, They've Got A Large, You Know, Kind Of Fill Pile Over There And They're Working On What They're Going To Do With That. This Is A Situation, And I Talked To Gary About This Today, This Pile Kind Of Came About With, At First Thought, Well, Now We Have A Spot, We Can Dump Stuff And Store Stuff. And Then We Didn't Use It And Then It Just Kind Of Got Added To And Added To And So There's Just A Conglomeration Of A Lot Of Different Types Of Soils Out There. So, I Mean, I Think It Would Have Been Worked Well Over Brad's Lot In Kind Of The Non-Structural Areas To Kind Of Bring That Lot Up And I Thought That Was A Nice Solution. I Look At It Right Now As Far As, You Know, We've Been Asked To, Can We Get Rid Of It? Can We Get At Least It Cut Down A Little Bit And Looking Nicer Out There? This Contractor Here Approached Me And Asked, You Know, If That Was Possible And I Said, Well, We Bring It Before The Village Board And See What You Guys Say.
So Not To Think Too Many Steps Out Because It's Not What I Do. But If, Like I Think, Now I'm Thinking About, A Minute Ago I Was Talking About Central Campus, Now I'm Thinking About The Extension Of Park Street And The Fact That That's Going To Be Low-Lying And Now I'm Thinking About The Dog Park And The Fact That The Dog Park Is Low-Lying And What If We Built The Dog Park Up Three Feet And Graded That Over And Seated It? And Would That Kill Off, I Mean, If You Tarp The Dog Park And Then You Put Three Feet Of Dirt On, It Would Kill Off All Your Weeds. And If You Seated That, You Could Potentially Wind Up With A Really Nice Park At A Proper Elevation That Would Address A Community Need. So Are There Other Creative Ways For Us To Think About This Dirt?
Sure.
To Solve Needs That We Have Either Today Or In The Very Short Run Besides Giving It Away? And If We Can Check Those Boxes And Say No, For Whatever Reason, It's Not The Right Quality Of Fill, Et Cetera, Well Then That Makes My Decision Real Easy, But...
But We Haven't Really Analyzed The Pile, I've Got To Be Honest With You. Just Right, It's Been A Place Where Things Have Gotten Dumped And Again, I Think Mark Was Thinking That, Mark Beale Was Thinking At Some Point We'd Use Some Of It For Grading The West Side Community Park Which, Oh, Sorry, Which Is This, As We're Talking About. Knowing That We're Going To Have To Bring In A Lot More Fill To Do The Whole Park, Some Of The Initial Fillings I Think We Can Actually Do Without It. So Again, No Offense To Steve, We Don't, We Don't Really Care. The Board Wants To Leave It There, We're Fine With It And We'll Just Leave It There And We'll Life Will Go On.
And We Can, I Mean, If The Direction Is, Let's Pick It Up This Next Spring Or Summer And When We, And I Hate To Say When Things Get Slow Because That Just Doesn't Happen. But, You Know, And Move It Over To An Area And Start Putting It On Top Of That, Put It On The Top Of The Pete Moss, Well, We Kind Of Know What Happened, That Was Some Structural Fill On Top Of The Pete Moss, It Turned It Kind Of Mushy. But, Yeah, I Mean, And You Talk About Like South Perry Parkway Connection, I Think That's A Good Point. We Don't, Again, Don't Know What We'll Be Needing There And How Much Remediation We're Going To Need Through That Area. It May Not Be A Adequate Soil For Use In There.
Yeah, Well, DNR Have Requirements For What Type Of Fill Goes In, I Would Assume?
It Won't Be, I Mean, The Fill, They're Not Going To Really Be Caring About The Type Of Fill As Much As Our Area That We'll Be Filling.
Okay.
And We'll Be More Concerned About The Type Of Fill For The Structural Backfill Because We'll Be Building Up That Roadway Slightly, It's Not Going To Be Terribly Elevated, But...
Yeah, So Mike Said, No Offense To Steve Because I'm The One, I've Pushed On This At Different Times Because I Think That Area Out There With The Bike Trail, Now The Rotary Trail And Lerner Park Is A Great Area And Those Piles Are An Eyesore. And Quite Frankly, They Block A Lot Of Lerner Park. There's Some Great Connections Into Lerner Park Right There. And It's Not That The Piles In The Way, But They Block All The Vision Of That. And My Vision Is That The Piles Go Out Of There, The Park Board Starts Working On A Nice Park Shelter With Water And Electricity. Has A Great Place For Family Reunions And Different Types Of Gatherings That Could Take Place Or So That Area Becomes Even More Community Centered. But To Do That, I Think The Dirt Piles Have To Go.
So How Many Cubic Yards You Think You Have Out There?
I Would Have No Idea.
I Was Dreading That Question.
Well, If You Picture 400, What's Left? Three Of Those, Two Of Those?
I Wouldn't Even, I Would Think That 400 Is Not Going To Be A Terribly Big Dent In This, But...
We've Been Collecting It For A While.
I'd Be, It Could Be Anywhere From A Third To Half, I Think, Or Could Be More, It Could Be, I Really Haven't Ever Gone Too Far Back There, I Only See What I See From The Bike Path. But...
Yeah, And For Me, If It's $4,000, I'm Fine To Do $4,000 For A Good Fill, We Do A Project And Be Down With It. But That's Just Me, That's What We Do.
Yeah, Well, I'm Glad We're Having The Conversation Now.
I Personally Really Like To See Them Out, But I May Be The Only One That Feels That Way, But I Just Think It Has More Potential As A Community Area With Getting It Out Of There, It Looks Better And Get It Shelter Built.
It Will Have To Get Out There Eventually, To Do What You're Talking About, Absolutely, Yeah.
This Isn't The First Inquiry, Inquiry?
That's Close Enough, Jeff.
Just Spell It.
I Think I'm Having A Stroke.
It's A Batman.
Yes. This Isn't The First Request That We Have Had For This Material. We've Had From Other Ones And We've Said We Have To Go Through The Village Board And They Said, Well, Okay, I Kind Of Need It Faster Than That. And I Said, You Know, But This Gentleman's Been Willing To Wait And Work With Us And Wait Till We Heard Back From Brad.
What Maybe He Could Take And Then Bring It Back To Us?
Oh, That's A Good Deal, Yeah.
Well, I Think It's Interesting That Brad Looked At The Pile With An Excavator Operator And That Guy Expressed Concern About The Quality Of The Fill.
Yeah, Well, I Think It's Probably...
I Think Everybody's Going To Have Concerns.
It's Concerns Probably Over The Uniformity Of It Because There's Probably Portions Like, I Talked To Gary, There's Portions That Are Probably Sandy Gravel Back There That Are Fairly Decent. There's Probably Some Black Dirt. Gary Thought We Might Try To Identify Where The Black Dirt Was And At Least Save That Because That's Something That We Do Purchase On Occasion. But We Would Work With This Hogan Excavating To, You Know...
Take The Worst Stuff.
Well...
Well, Maybe As A Note, You Know, Since We Continue To Move Dirt Back There As The Village Does Different Things, Maybe It's Worth Us Thinking Forward When We Do This In The Future And Start Segregating The Black Dirt From The Clay Dirt From The Sandy Dirt In Some Sort Of A Way That A Landscaping Company Would As Opposed To Just Dumping It Out In The Farm Field.
Yeah, One Of My First Directives Was Is Let's Stop Dumping Out There.
Yeah.
That Was Just Personally, You Know, Because I Didn't, I Didn't, I Agreed.
That Was The Last Time Jeff Listened To Me, By The Way.
Yes, Yes, Yeah, Once A Year And That Was In 2015, I Think, But, But No, Yeah, I've Asked Him To Stop Dumping Out There.
And I Think I Got One Of, Two Complaints In The Fall With The Weeds Growing, People With Allergies, I Understand That, Yeah.
That's The Way We Weed Ordinance And We Violate It, Right?
I Understand.
That's Awesome. See How Hard It Is To Enforce Those Ordinances? That's What I Was Talking About Earlier.
I Didn't Recognize You. So My Thought Is Let's Let Them Take What They've Proposed. That'll Let Us Get An Idea How Much Is Left, Start Identifying What We Have For Decent Soil. I Like That He Looked At The Dog Park Because I Think If It's Higher And Dryer, Get A Lot More Use, Get Rid Of The Weeds, That Type Of Thing. And See And Then Start To Analyze What Might Be Available, Just Something Like That Or Something Else That Wants Left Of It.
Well, I Would Put Tarp Down And There's Got To Be Some Sort Of A Fabric That You Can Put Down On The Ground That Can Keep The Dirt From Being Absorbed Into The Pete Moss And Yet Kill All The Weeds That Are Underneath Of It And That Whole Issue Of Eradication Might Go Away.
Yeah.
By Just Putting 1,000 Square Yards, Cubic Yards Of Dirt On Top.
We're Looking At That Kind Of Stuff.
But, You Know, If We Let Them Take The 400, That's Going To Give Us A Pretty Good Idea About How Much Is Left.
Yeah.
I Would Think. And It's Done And We'll See And See If We Can't Find A Use For It, The Dog Park Might Be A Great Place For It.
I Would Move To Approve The Hauling.
I Think We Got A Motion.
We Do.
Yeah, We Do Have It.
We Do, Yep.
Yeah, We Do Have It. For Once I Know, Doug. Write It Down.
Okay. Is There A Second To The Motion?
Yeah, We Have A Motion.
And A Third.
Yeah, And Discussion, So Is Any More Discussion Or Questions? Okay, Swear The Motion To Authorize Hogan Excavating To Remove Up To 400 Cubic Yards Of Fill Material From Keller Alpine Park Field Disposal Piles. All In Favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Motion Curious. Thank You. Item J, Discussion Possible Action Regarding The Influent Pump And RES Pump Replacement. Recommend A Motion Is To Accept The Proposal From Xylem Water Solutions USA For The Replacement Of Influent Pump Number One For A Total Cost Of $12,600 And Accept The Proposed Cost From LW Ellen For The Replacement Of RES Pump 32 For A Total Cost Of $9,347. Both Pump Replacements To Be Funded From The Existing Equipment Replacement Fund Under The Waste Water Utility.
I Will Correct That To RES Pump Number Two Instead Of The Pump 32, I Was A Title On My Part.
Okay. So Do We Have A Motion?
Some Move.
Thank You.
Second.
Thank You.
If You Remember, We Replaced Actually Pump Number Three Last Year And These Pumps Are Obviously That They're The Same Duty Service Pumps, We Actually Have Five Of Them. I Envision We'll Probably Be Replacing One Of These A Year For The Next At Least Four Years. And Actually Got A Little Better Price This Time Around, I Don't Know If, I Haven't Questioned It Too Much, But It Was, You Know, A Couple Hundred Dollars Cheaper Than The Last One Go Around. So That Was The $12,600. And Then For The RES Pump, That's A Severe Duty Pump And Again, Kind Of Our Goal Has Been To Replace As We Can Just Because Of The Severe Duty And What The Nature Down There And The Life We Get Out Of The Equipment. Waste Water Tree Plan Operates With A Equipment Reserve Fund And For Specifically These Type Of Reasons. So It's With The Idea Of You Put A Mount In There Every Year With The Idea That You're Actually Having To Upgrade Pumps And Replace Equipment Over Time.
So Does It Make Sense Being That The Price Has Gone Down To Buy A Couple Instead Of Buying One?
I Wouldn't Say It's Gone Down That Much, But I Mean It's, You Know, Just When I Looked At What Last Year's Price Was Versus This, Right? I Can't Remember, But It Was A Little Cheaper. Sometimes It Just Depends, A Lot Of These Pumps Are Coming From Overseas, I Can't Remember Where Flight Comes, This Is A, Xylem Is, Used To Be Flight And I'm Not Sure If They're Coming From Overseas Or Not, But Certain Things Just Affect The Prices Slightly.
Okay, So Do We Have A Motion Second Or Further Discussion Or Questions? So The Motion Second Is To Replace The Two Pumps At Cost Of $12,600 And $9,347. All In Favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Motion Curious.
Thank You.
Thanks, Jeff. Item K, Discussion Possible Action, Oregon Area Fire EMS District Labor Agreement. Recommend A Motion Is To Approve That Agreement Between The Oregon Area Fire EMS District And Firefighters Local 311 For January 1, 2017 To December 31, 2019.
Some Move.
Second.
Thank You.
So I Will Tell You That I Think This Is A Very Good Contract That We Have. I Think That Given Where We Started The Negotiations And Where We Ended Them, All Parties Really Come Out A Winner In This And It Is An Increase, But It's A Well Deserved Increase. It Gets Us More In Line With Other Local Fire Departments And Hopefully Slows Some Of The Attrition That We've Seen As Firefighters Have Gone From The Oregon Fire EMS District To Madison, For Example, Or Other, Even, I Think One Went All The Way As Fires Stevens Point Just For The Pay Increase. So There's A Lot That We Invest In Our Firefighters And Our EMS Personnel In Terms Of Money And Every Time One Of Them Leaves, They Take All That Investment With Them. So For Those Reasons, I Think This Is A Very Good Labor Agreement For Both Parties.
Okay, Good, Thanks, Jeff. Do You Agree I Take It Barely?
Yes.
Same Commission, Okay. Any Other Questions?
Is There Any Significance To The Fact That The New Contract Is For Three Years Versus Four Years?
Well, Everything Is Negotiated, So I'd Say Yeah, There's Significance To It. My Guess Is That The Union Wanted To Try To Shorten Up The Term Of The Agreement In The Hopes That They Could Come Back In A Shorter Period Of Time And Negotiate Higher Salaries. Ultimately, The Union Started, I Feel Like They Started At 21% Over Four Years As An Increase, Phased In An Increase. And What They, What We Settled On, I Believe, Was 13% Over Four Years, So, Or Over Three Years. So I Think What The Union's Trying To Do Is Create A Smaller Window So That They Can Come Back And Renegotiate The Salaries Earlier.
I See.
Instead Of Going Out That Additional Four. And In The Negotiations Process, That Probably Was Part Of Why They Were Willing To Go To 13% As Opposed To Trying To Force The Issue Higher.
Yeah, Okay, Thank You.
You're Welcome.
Other Questions Or Comments? So We Have A Motion And Second To Approve The Labor Agreement Between Oregon Area Fire EMS And Firefighters Local 311. All In Favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Motion Curious. Item L, Discussion Possible Action Regarding 2016 South Main And Elm Street Utility And Street Improvements, Pay Request Number Three. Recommend A Motion To Approve Pay Request Number Three In Amount Of $342,282.96.
Some Move.
Second.
Thank You.
This Also Includes The Change Order, What This, This Is A, Not Really A Final Pay Request, But It Is A Final Pay Request, The Only Thing That Would Be Outstanding Would Be Whatever We're Holding For Retainage. And So This Is Also The Pay Request Where You See A Change Order Come Through Where And so this is also the pay request where you see a change order come through where they adjust the amounts based off the original contract, unit prices and per unit items versus what was actually used and built out in the field. So you see some pluses, you see some minuses. We also, the reason we're seeing an $11,000 change order positive is actually because of the complete undercut of the entire roadway along both, all of Elm and Main. And that was replaced with that GeoGrid fabric, or well, I call it fabric, but it's a, like a hard plastic HDPE grid and about 18 to 24 inches of break or run on top of that. So we got a very nice roadway for it and contractor, I think, did a nice job.
Are all the terraces reconstructed and seated?
They are reconstructed, seated, and they have erosion mat on them. Obviously, we were way too late for a growing season. That's why we've actually held back the $5,700 because that, we feel that that's kind of the only thing we have hanging out there right now. Everything else has been taken care of. Contractor did a nice job with going after the punch list, if you will.
Okay, good, thanks. Any other questions? So we have a motion and second to approve the Pay Request Number Three in the amount of $342,282.96 for South Main and Elm Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item M is distribution of Palitarius 2017 collection calendars. They're on the Village website and you can also get a hard copy of Village Hall, Senior Center, and the library if you want to know what your collection cycle is. And item N, review of investments, connection fees, impact fees, and billing permits. Any comments here from staff?
I just want to point out, a single family, through November of 16 versus 2015, total, we're down 13. I think we might have had one or two pulled in December so far, so we're probably gonna end up at least 10 under 16 compared to 15. Duplexes were the same amount. We had more multifamily last year and that's all the ones out on CC. And then commercial, we were about the same amount last year versus this year so far.
So total value was about $8 million less so far, right?
Correct.
There was.
Yes.
Okay, are there any questions on any of those items? So item 10, report of committees, we have done item A, excuse me, item two, discussion possible action. Jeannie, this is you again for item two.
Sure, so this is approval of Zero Lot Line, CSM, a certified survey map for a duplex on Lot Two of Mary Hill, Third Edition, along Thompson Drive. So we make a motion that we approve the Zero Lot Line Certified Survey Map for a duplex on Lot Two of Mary Hill, Third Edition, along Thompson Drive, contingent on meeting items in the Village Engineer and Village Planner Memorandums, including the adjustment of the common property line in the area behind the dwelling. So let's provide a minimum of 5,800 square feet for both Lot One and Lot Two to comply with the requirements of TR-6 zoning district.
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B is December 5th Personnel Public Safety Protection, and you're still on, Jeannie.
All right. So this is a discussion and possible action regarding the approval of new fireworks ordinance. So first, I'm going to make a motion that the board, by two-thirds vote, may suspend the rules and have the first and second readings at tonight's meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Nikki.
And then my second motion is that we approve ordinance 1633, which repeals and recreates Section 9.05 of the Village of Oregon Municipal Code relating to the regulation of fireworks. And Village, and we incorporate a $25 fee.
Go second that motion.
So in good news, this is making summer fest now legal to have fireworks.
As long as they pass.
Yeah.
I'll watch Jeannie.
We might, we might waive the $25 fee. Yeah, Jeannie left, that was interesting.
Well, then we're charging 50.
And we were thinking that, you know, if we do charge $25, that we keep 10 just to handle our paperwork in 15, we go to the district, fire district because, you know, Glenn will be doing most of the, fire chief will be doing most of the work on this, so.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jeannie. Item two, discussion possible action about accrued time off donation program. The recommended motion is to accept the Village Administrator's recommendation of terminating that program as discussed in Section 5E of the Program's Guidelines and a donated time that's already been approved shall remain in effect until use. So we need that motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We talked about this at the last meeting. Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
See, these are actually coming out of committee. These aren't coming out of committee.
Oh, okay.
So Jeannie is...
Oh, she's still on.
I didn't mean to be...
No, that's all right. I just shouldn't be quiet, so you can take item three, Jeannie. Just throw something at me, it's not your water bottle.
It's not like this stuff's super exciting, so. All right, so number three is discussion of possible action regarding Wisconsin Rural Water Association with the catchy acronym of WRWA, Consolidated Group Safety Management Agreement. So here is my motion, that we approve the Wisconsin Rural Water Association Consolidated Group Safety Management Agreement for the Village's safety program. And our 2017 budget includes $4,500 for this safety program.
Second.
This will help us begin to formalize our safety program that's been lacking for a little bit of time.
Okay. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then item number four, this was referred back to committee. So this is a discussion of possible action regarding the ordinance of regulation of alarm systems. So note that the previous committee recommendation was that we asked the direct, we asked the village attorney to prepare necessary language to adopt ordinance presented by Chief Malarnik and to work to distribute information with the Chamber of Commerce. And so I'd make a motion that we rescind that previous committee recommendation.
I'll second.
And so for those of you that are at the meeting, you know that we have a different fire chief now. And he's been working with the businesses and the school and thinks that he probably has a better option of dealing with this rather than going through an entire ordinance where we charge folks to do, I don't know.
Well, and there was a concern that if we didn't charge, charge the school district, that the private company or private businesses would be, well, why not charge it in the district? And then when Glenn and Brian looked at it, they didn't feel there was a need for it.
Yeah.
So that's why we're asking the board to rescind the motion.
So, yeah, change in leadership, so a change in recommendation.
Yep.
Any questions? So we have a motion second to rescind that previous committee recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, and number five.
This is a discussion and possible action regarding denial of operator's license for Jeremy Krug. Should be noted that he did not appear at our committee meeting and staff recommends denial of operator's license. So I would move that we deny the operator's license for Jeremy Krug.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Jeannie. Item 11, minutes now requiring action, there are none. Item 12, we've done that. 13, new business, approval of pending new operator licenses. These are approved by the Police Department, Quick Trip 302, Haley Peterson, and Headquarters, Ryan Hoffman.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 14 is future agenda items coming our way. And item 15 is a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.